Okay, let's call to order the April meeting of the Fairfax Town Council. The Pledge of Allegiance to start us off this evening. Okay, to start off, let me make a few announcements about, first of all, about the agenda. We're going to take number 14 off the agenda for this evening, bring it back in May. And we're also taking number 18 off of the agenda, which I know is why many of you are here this evening. And to explain that more fully, I'm going to turn it over to the town attorney to expand about why number 18 is coming off the closed session. I will say, however, that what she's going to say in her remarks is that many of you have assembled to talk about number 18. We will be able -- opportunity for conversation and discussion is there. We're just, if you will, putting it under a different heading. So with that, Janet, do you want to give a full explanation of this?
Sure. But first, I want to talk about the fact that there is no reporting out from closed session and that there was direction given to staff. So we're taking 18 off of the agenda. 18 is a reconsideration of the approval of the zoning amendment that was done at the last meeting, at the March 5 meeting. And the reason we're taking that off is because this afternoon, there was a referendum petition was filed with the elections official, with the town clerk. And from the first review that is done of that petition, it appears that there are enough valid signatures to actually have it filed with the town clerk. And that number is 530 signatures that were required. And so it was filed, and once a referendum petition has been filed, then the ordinance is suspended. And it doesn't even need to be in effect, it's still suspended. And so a reconsideration of that ordinance cannot happen. What will happen at this point with that petition is that it is going to be -- the signatures on it are going to be checked to make sure they're valid signatures, that they're registered voters in the town of Fairfax. And it will be reviewed for consistency with the Elections Code provisions. And then the elections official, the town clerk, will be bringing that back to you at a future meeting for certification, if it's a valid petition, if the signature's honored or valid. What that means, though, is that in the interim, this ordinance is suspended. When it comes back to you, you have a few choices. You can, pursuant to statute, you can repeal the ordinance, make the move to start the repeal process, or you can put it on the ballot. And that can either be a special or a regular election. Probably it would be placed on the November ballot, if that's your choice, if that's what you decide to do. But the real meaning behind this, the real thing that's important to understand, is that if it is a valid petition, and if you do repeal the ordinance, or if it goes to election and the voters approve the referendum, that means that you cannot enact that ordinance that was the subject of the referendum for a period of a year. And you can't do anything even similar to it for a period of a year. Right now, we have a moratorium in place. This ordinance was taking CH to CC to bring it into conformance with our general plan. And we had a moratorium in place on development applications in all CH-zoned, for CH-zone parcels, and yes.
This is like a civics lesson on steroids. Let's go back to the very beginning, and if you could just explain for the public, again, one more time, because even, I think, we are grappling with this, because it just came to us today. If you could just explain to the public one more time why we are not going to hear item number 18 this evening?
Because a valid referendum, presumably valid referendum, has been filed with the elections official, with the town clerk. And by statute, the ordinance that is the subject of that referendum is suspended, and action on that is suspended. So this was an action to reconsider that ordinance. And so we can't take any action on that ordinance while it's suspended.
Okay. Any questions of the town attorney on this matter, very briefly, or else we'll hold it for a reason. And let me explain and sort of lay out, in this rather unorthodox fashion, how we're going to have the meeting. After, of course, we have an introduction swearing in of our new police officer, and we'll go through our announcements. At that point, normally, we would have opportunity for open time, but what we'll do is advance the town manager's report. The town manager's report will provide the opportunity for council to discuss with the manager in open session, the developments of today. And then we will go from there into open time, providing everybody three minutes or five minutes, if you're a group, to express your opinion. And if it's on number 18, of course, which is no longer on the agenda, you can feel free to do so. So with that, I would ask for a motion approving the agenda and the affidavit of posting.
As amended.
As amended.
So moved.
Second.
Bragman Kohler. The town attorney already announced our closed session action. And now, for the sole pleasant experience of the entire evening, we very much turn over to the chief the opportunity to introduce and swear in our new police officer, Mario Pioro.
Thank you. Mario, why don't you come on up here? I want to introduce to the mayor and the council our new officer, Mario Pioro, and the public. He started with us, I'm going to say, about a week and a half ago, I believe. And he started his training program. He is born and raised in Marin County. He's a resident of Santa Fe for the past 10 years. So it's nice to get a local, so to speak, employee that doesn't have to travel so far away, as we often experience. He put himself through the police academy and graduated third in his class, which was quite an achievement, considering there was only three in his class.[448.03][448.03](Laughter) But good job on that. You should be proud. I know your parents are proud. He was -- got to keep this short, but the mayor always gasps at this, but he's 25 years old, born in 1988, and I had already been a policeman five years before he was born, so it's probably time for me to leave. So we're happy to have him. His family is here, his parents, his mother and his father, some friends are here to see him get sworn in. And most interesting for everyone is, he's the new breed in pension reform, in concessions that the town, that the police association has made in their memberent standing, where they share costs of their retirement, they share costs of their medical plan. And with pension reform that went into effect last year, he represents $73,000 savings over the outgoing officer. Not that we want to see tenured, experienced people leave, but here's a result of the concessions that the POAs made in negotiations with the town and the pension reform. So this is a $73,000 savings. Not that he's going to be any better than the guy that left, but, you know, we'll see. So having said that, I think I've made fun of everybody enough. The town clerk is going to swear him in.
You can do whatever you want.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and then state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter?
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Okay, and as is generally customary, the police chief will pin the badge on the new officer, but I would like to invite Mr. Pioro up here to pin the badge on his son.
Thank you, Chief. And with that, we'll move on to announcements, for which there are many. The Fairfax Food Pantry, of course, opened from 9 to 11 at the Community Church on Drake. Volunteers always needed. The Fairfax Artists in Residence has a show coming up a week from Friday, the 11th, 7 to 10, in the Pavilion. Includes a number of artists. The Community Passover Seder in this room on Friday, the 18th, between 6 and 9. The Easter Egg Hunt on Saturday, the 19th, in Belinas Park at 10:00. And the Tweens Hunt at 1:00 PM in Perry Park. National Volunteer Week starts April 21st, and one could not have missed, even through the storm, the banner that's been stretched across Drake imploring, "All Fairfaxans to just do one volunteer thing a year. We need your help. Remember, we have a staff that you can count on your hands. We rely desperately on the support of volunteers to get done all the good work that we do." National Drug Takeback Day, April 26, 10 to 2, at the police station. Please do not flush your old drugs, whether it's vitamins, Advil, or something pharmaceutical, down the toilet, or throw it in the garbage. Bring it to the police station. This stuff kills our bay. It is impossible for the sewage treatment facility to digest this stuff and make it safe on the back end. It's killing us. Bring it to the police station. Also, like last year, document shredding and e-waste in the Pavilion parking lot, 10 to 2. We continue to have a vacancy on the Affordable Housing Committee, ironically, applications at Town Hall and on the Town website. Two vacancies on the Climate Action Committee, applications also, Town Hall, Town website. I guess the big news of the last couple of weeks, perhaps you heard, the Drake basketball team did its community very proud. And we thank them for the excitement that they brought to our community. The Fairfax Open Space, two things. There's a benefit concert fundraiser on the 4th of May in Perry Park, 1 to 5. It'll be the Grateful Dead tribute band. And as well, we have the, on April 26th, in my neighborhood, Upper Ridgeway Trail Celebration Event with Supervisor Rice. The Marin Open Space Trust meet on the corner of Willow and Upper Ridgway at 1:00 PM to share in the magic celebration of our acquiring a very valuable piece of open space. Okay. And with that, we will turn to the town manager, who will give us a report on the issue of the day.
Oops. Okay, as you indicated earlier, that item 18 was pulled based on the referendum. And I thought it would be helpful, under the town manager report, to provide a little background on how we got to this point. So maybe backing up a little bit, council and the community may remember, back in the end of January, the Planning Commission heard the rezoning action, and we sent out roughly 2,000 notices related to that public hearing. Then in February, the council had a meeting to consider the first reading of this rezoning action. And we had that in February, and we had the second meeting reading in March. And at that time, there are concerns raised at that March meeting. Now, I thought it'd be important to just remind everyone of how, why the rezoning action started in the first place. So it all goes back, really, to the gas station and use permit process for the gas station. And at that time, we thought the gas station would be subject to formula-based businesses because it was in a central commercial zone. Turns out, it was in a central highway location, and thus can only decide on the use permit issues. Council at that time indicated, well, we really need to get to the CH rezoning quicker. And so staff wanted to go back and start the process to rezone all CH to CC per your general plan policies. And so what we did is, we went back, we started that, and then at that time, staff recognized that the zoning map, which is the overall map for the town, needed to also be adopted by ordinance. So in addition to the CH to CC rezoning, to make the map consistent, we added in something that we refer to as public domain, which is public property zoning. And we added three new properties under the PDD zoning. And those three properties were the new ones added. And that's why everything was packaged up and taken to the council for approval. Now, at the March 5 meeting, in hindsight, I think staff recognizes we could perhaps handle things differently at that March 5 meeting. But specifically, what I mean is, I think staff could have made more clear, both to the community, as well as to the council, what the zoning actions actually did. Because at the meeting, there were concerns raised around existing PDDs. We should have made clear at that time is, any issues with existing PDDs, properties, exists now. Even if the staff, not the staff, but even if the council took no action, those issues would still be there. What we should have made clear is, in the future, we would actually have to revise the language within that zoning. And that would address concerns related to the new properties, and could address concerns with the old properties, the existing zoning. Because we probably would have made clear, our goal was just to keep the existing zoning the same for all the properties zoned PDD. And I don't know whether that helped or not, and for staff, you know, we could have made that more clear. I think that would have made a difference. Now, since that time, with the idea of the petition circulating related to a referendum, we've heard a lot of other information out there. And as staff, we've been trying to respond. And one of the issues that came up was related to what the property we refer to as the wall property. And it's around the Marinada Court area. And the issue came up that some people were saying that the council action rezoned that property from a total of 10 units, one unit per 10 acres, to a total of 25. So I guess that'd be one unit for five, two and a half acres. The issue really is, we made clear, is no. None of the zoning actions the council took affected that property. What was pointed out to us is that somewhere on a table in the housing element, it had the right zoning, which is UR10, right general plan amendment, which is UR10, which means one unit to 10 acres. It's defined that way in the general plan, the code says that. But on one column, on a couple of tables, it said a density of .25, which would equate to the 25 versus the 10 units on the property. And so for staff, we're indicating, that problem exists now, whether this ordinance goes through, or whether it was never enacted. That problem exists now. So it's helpful for staff to really know those things, so we could bring it to attention of the council, and then we can go ahead and correct it. So one of the other things that we saw out there was, staff was accused of a cover-up, a cover-up of the wall and other properties, just because we wanted to see this rezoning action go through. And ironically, a cover-up implies that we know what we're covering up. And unfortunately, in this case, we did not know that that .25 was listed in there incorrectly, although we believe it's a clerical error, still important. So for staff, if there are other issues like that in the general plan, which is my understanding, was pointed out to me, there are some issues like that, but no specifics, then it'd be really helpful, if you don't want to turn it into staff, that really the planning commission and the council know what those are? Because we're going to have to correct those regardless of whatever action you take. At this time, point, it's very difficult for staff to determine whether or not any of that's related to this rezone action, because we don't really know what that information is. But in any case, it's really something that should come to the council anyway, so we should go ahead and clean up that type of issue. But in the last week, it's become more clear to staff what perhaps the core issue is behind the referendum. And we think it has to do with, the general plan has something in there that's called the regional share of housing. And it's 172 units that the town has to plan for. Now, that number of 172 is over a 15-year period, so almost 12 units per year. I would think, if it actually developed at that rate, maybe people wouldn't really notice that there are 10 or 12 units developing a year. Reality is, the town has seen less than two units developed over the course of the year. So really, we've seen zero growth. But more importantly, if you take that 172 units over the 15-year period, and you really break it down, of that 172, 48 units are already either permitted, built, or allowed by right, meaning the zoning already allows that. So it's 48 units out of 172. So really, what we're talking about, I think, is 124 units. Of the 124 units, one of the things in the general plan is it talks about 53 units as second-story residential units in the downtown area. Now, one of the actions was rezoning CH to CC. In the CC zone, those units would be allowed by right, but still subject to design review and other zoning standards. However, without that, what happens is, actually, you can apply now for units in the CH zone, it just takes a use permit. So you would have to go through more of a process, but you can through that process. And so if you break that out, and you take those 53 units out, what you're left is with three sites that total out to roughly 71 units. And what that is, is nine units on School Street, 40 units on two acres on the church, what we refer to as a church property, and 22 units of workforce housing on the Ten Alima property. So what you're talking about is, you're talking about units kind of spread out in the community that would allow for it to be planned, not necessarily built. But more importantly, I think, from my perspective, I think, obviously, these documents, general plan was adopted in 2012, Housing Element, I think, October 2013. And from my experience in other towns, it's a very well-planned document. It's, as our planning director likes to point out, it's a very organic document. You've done what would work well in Fairfax, trying to address the needs of the regional fair share. I think something that gets lost in the translation is, you've had hundreds, if not thousands, of hours from the dozens of volunteers that worked on the general plan for 12 years, Housing Element maybe for two, three years. You had numerous public meetings, you had lots of comments. Those dozens of volunteers includes the council, the planning commission, the GPAC, the GPIC, staff. And so it's something, I think, that wasn't rushed. It wasn't rushed in preparing the plans, well-thought-out, well-crafted. We weren't trying to rush anything through to get things approved. Obviously, we could have presented things differently, maybe that would have made a difference. And so, really, when I look at it, it's, you know, it's unfortunate that the referendum was submitted before the council could reconsider things. Because I think you were going to try to take a look at, see if you could address those needs or those issues, but now, you really can't. And so, really, my final comments have to do with, as staff, you know, I think the community, they're well within their rights to have a submitted petition. That's allowed, that's part of the public process. I don't have any problems with that. I don't even have any problems with criticism of staff. People are allowed to criticize staff, we could always do things better. We're trying to be more collaborative, trying to see what's out there, and trying to work with the community and the council. I just think, I'm just a little disappointed that it's kind of gotten to this point, and all the misinformation out there, that we've been spending, try to, try to address those concerns. But with that, I was going to have the town attorney kind of explain a little bit more about the referendum process, but I believe she's already addressed that. So with that, that's kind of my initial comments.
Let's drill down a little bit on some of these things. Let's start with the wall property. Is the wall property still zoned one per 10 acres?
That's correct.
So it's not 25 houses?
No.
One per 10?
One per 10.
Okay. So there's no rezoning that occurred during the recent rezoning experience?
No, no rezoning. And actually, as staff, we've come out and said, if anyone were to submit an application other than 1 to 10, we would tell them, no, it's 1 to 10.
10 houses on the wall property, max?
Max.
Secondly, I want to go through the numbers again, the 170-odd numbers. So I know you mentioned that about five minutes ago. You slowly go through these numbers one more time, so the community could understand. Because when you say 172 units, my heavens, that's, that's a grand number. But as you discuss them, and you begin to drill down on them, you see that some of them have already been built, some of them are affordable and workforce housing designated, some would be in this place, some would be in that place. So can you go over that conversation one more time?
Sure, and just let me know if I'm going too fast. So it's 172 units is our fair share of housing, as dictated by the state in ABAC.
I'm sorry, let me interrupt. Is this part of one-plan Bay Area nonsense?
No, this is completely separate process. We're not part of that, we don't have any priority development areas, so that's a completely separate process.
One more time. This is not part of one-plan Bay Area nonsense?
That's correct, it's not part of one-plan Bay Area.
Go on.
Okay. So 172 is the goal, it just has to be planned, doesn't mean it has to be built. Of that, 48 units are already permitted, built, or allowed by right in certain zoning. So really, you're down to 124 units.
The 172, 24 are already there, people living there.
Oh, they're already built, yeah, a little more than 24. It could be like 27 units actually being built.
Go on.
Okay. So 53 units is what we targeted would be in the downtown area, or what we refer to as the CC zoning. If it was in the CC zone, it wouldn't need a use permit, it's allowed by right, but would need design review.
Well, let me just ask, is this new building, or, as I have referred to it, if you wanted to live on top of Yeah Baby, or, you know, one of our second, you know, our existing buildings?
Oh, it's a second story.
On an existing building?
On an existing building. Although they could build, they could build a second story.
Right, but there's, we're kind of built out in the downtown, we don't see, we don't see new buildings going up here.
That, that's correct. Or they could build a new building. But it's second story, 53 units, currently, in the current zoning, they can do it with the, anyone can do it with a use permit. Although right now, it's a moratorium, so you wouldn't be able to do anything right now.
One clarification. It was on your point.
Go ahead.
So, did you, so, okay. Could somebody on an existing building build a second story by right and still just have to go through design review? Is that correct? So let's say there's a building that doesn't have a second story, could they build a second story on an existing building?
They can now, but they couldn't have a residential without a use permit.
If the change that we had proposed, that was by right, could somebody then build a second story on an existing building and not require a conditional use permit and only go through design review? Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm just trying to understand it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Same, same issue. And let's say that a business moved out, and somebody wanted to put a residence on the first floor as well.
First-floor residencies aren't allowed.
Thank you.
I've got a question, Mayor. On the wall property, I, you know, I've seen the document, and I know the council didn't intentionally rezone that. I'm just wondering when there's a discrepancy in the zoning density, which obviously we have. I looked through the housing element, it's actually listed at .25 units an acre, and a couple different of the, a couple different tables in, in the document. The housing element language was incorporated into the zoning ordinance that was passed at our last session, was it not?
Do you mean specifically referencing the housing element? I don't believe it, it did that.
Well, I, I think that's, that is, that is where the zoning ordinance that we passed was derived. And my question really is a broader question, which is, could that give rise, at least to an issue by a purchaser of that property, or a claim by the purchaser of the property that... that he or she was allowed a higher density?
No, we're aware of the, of the problems with the tables, and that's something that we were going to address. And the, what we have discussed is that when, when there is a typographical error in a table, when there is a number in a table, if there is text somewhere in the document that explains it, you can use the text as a higher standard than what the number is written in the table, you can use that as evidence that that is a typographical error, it's not the intent.
Even, even when it's repeated throughout in several different tables?
Even when it's, it's in the different tables. Because the text is going to, is going to have a higher authority than a number in a table.
Okay.
Okay, getting back to the numbers. Let's return to this 172 and how you're breaking it down.
Okay, so 53 units in the downtown area, then the remaining 71 units was nine, nine units on the School Street Plaza property, 22 units of workforce housing on Tana Lima, and 40 units of senior housing on two acres on the church property.
Now, stop there. It seems to me, my recollection is that we have an affordable housing committee, I referenced it during the announcements, we have two, we have a committee up here of two council members, and have for some time. Hasn't that project kind of moved down the path toward completion with the full support of the council and the town to date?
That would be my understanding, in terms of the nonprofit working with the church and staff, in terms of trying to craft what a project could look like on that property.
So what's left of the 172?
Mayor, before you move on, I want to, because I've been a member--
No, 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 I hear you, I just want, no, I just want to hear him go--
Before, before, Mayor, I have a point of order.
You can have a point of order after he goes through the rest of the numbers that I've been asking him to go through.
Really?
Yes, really. And then I'll turn right to you.
Okay.
Turn right to you.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Garrett, can you finish off the numbers?
That actually totals out to 172.
So that's the total sum. If you add up the affordable housing, the downtown second units, the nine on School Street Plaza, the 24 that are already odd ones that have been built, if you add all of that up, we come to the 172.
Yes, you add that up plus what was built and what was already pre-zoned, in other words, allowed by right in existing zoning.
Can you speak a little slower, please? I'm having trouble.
Oh, sorry, sorry. So would you like, okay, so yes, of the 172, again, 48 units were either built, built, yeah, they were either built or allowed by right in the existing zoning, that's 48. 53 units are allowed in the downtown area currently under a use permit, but the rezone would have made it, it allowed by right without a use permit, although everything is subject to design review. And then the remaining 71, nine units were proposed to see developed on the School Street Plaza site, 22 units of workforce housing on the Tana Lima site, and 40 units on two acres on the church property site, and those were envisioned to be senior housing units. And you add that up, that's 172 units to meet the planning for 172 units. Again, that's the 15-year, the past 15-year period of 172 units planned for, of which you've probably seen, you know, I think the number is like 27 or 28 units actually built during that timeframe.
Thanks for going over that. Larry?
On the PDD zone, okay, I looked at the PDD zoning procedures in our code, which is chapter 17. And PDD, which is Plan Development District, it's like a little subdivision type of plan, is not simply zoned by fiat. There is a process to arrive at a PDD zone, and it involves a public process where the public and the town and the developer would go through a series of meetings, and those series of meetings would eventually result in the development of what they call, in our code, a precise plan, after which, and only after which, would the property be rezoned. So my question is, how in one sweep of the hand do we ignore the process that's in our code and rezone those areas as PDD without even having a precise plan? And I think that was one of the questions driving the opposition or the concerns that were raised by the folks that spoke, and it's certainly a concern of mine.
So as I, as I understand the question, typically, when you zone something PDD, you're right, under the current standards, it's actually a very long process. And the first step is a preliminary plan, then there's a master plan, then a precise plan dictates exactly what'd be there. But with the whole purpose of that zoning is, you would just have that zoning on a property, and if someone wanted to actually develop it, they have to come into the town first and say, here's what we're having as a concept. Then as a concept gets further refined, then they have to come in with a master plan, then actually, when it's going to be built, they come in with a precise plan. So actually, the zoning is meant for them to come through the process to work it out because you don't know exactly what you want to see on that property, and that's why you have this PDD-type zoning, because you're going to have a process in order to come up with the plan that you're looking for. So actually, it's a way to actually provide more oversight for the community and the governing bodies to really see what you'd like to see on that property.
Could I, if you look at the code, I believe that the way the process works is the actual rezoning doesn't occur until the end of that process.
I think as Jim was pointing out, maybe we're a little, don't quite understand the question correctly, but my understanding is the zoning is PDD. Are you saying--
The zoning, the actual zoning of PDD occurs after the process and after the precise plan is agreed upon.
No, actually, I think the zoning designation is PDD and the general plan designation is PDD, so that actually is the zoning. So if it came in, and PD isn't allowed it, but if you had a PD that allowed commercial or residential or mixed use, it wouldn't be a mixed-use type zoning, it would be the PDD zoning, is it? The plans itself would dictate actually what can be built on the property.
Okay, well, I think we have a disagreement about how that process works.
How will we clear up that disagreement?
I think the easiest way is, we would just meet with Councilman Bragman, and I could have the town attorney and our Planning and Building Services Director, and we can go through it and try to explain how we see it works, as, how it works. It works the same typically as all the other communities I've been, been in. They call it something different, PUDs, PDs, but it's in essence the same process.
When you arrive at your conclusion, however it is, I'd love to see a memo that we can release to the public.
That's fine. I mean, I think it's actually in the code already, but--
Well, we'll--
I'm happy to sit down with you.
Other questions? Barbara, John? Renee, this is, do you want us--
Yeah.
Yeah.
John, you want?
Okay.
Okay, so I'm actually going to speak it in a, in a very different language, because I know that the people that have spoken with me about this issue are the people on the street that have been very confused. So I'm going to assume that there's a lot of people, because by my statistics of who's spoken with me, probably of, I'm going to be quite honest, 15 people, there were 13 who said, dang, you know, I really didn't quite understand, and how do I rescind my signature? So I'm going to speak what I wrote today, and I just want to speak this in the language of, of the people, if you will, because I think if I asked people out there in, in TV land, how many people understood the staff report, I'm not quite sure I would get many more than what I've seen out on the street. But we did get quite a few signatures, so I think it's important, they got quite a few signatures, so I think it's important to speak what I'm going to speak here. So bear with me.
Let me clear it up for him. Nicola, you came in a little late.
I was here from the beginning, I see you're discussing--
If you were here from the--
The law lawyer said you can't discuss.
That's right. And let me explain again, so that it's clear, because this is important for the community to know. Number 18 was removed, however, we wanted to ensure that the public would have the opportunity to speak on the issue. Once 18 was removed, there's nothing to vote on, there's no action that can be taken. So what we did was, we advanced the manager's report so that he could give his report, the council could have the conversation with the manager, and then everybody in the community who wishes to speak on the, on the issue of the day can come up and, and speak at length. Okay, that's what we're doing. Renee?
In the book, The Best Laid Plans: Our Planning and Affordable Housing Challenges in Marin, Bob Silvestri calls himself, quote, "an affordable housing advocate." He states that, quote, "Affordable housing," or any housing for that matter, "has to be appropriate for its location. And to succeed, any plan has to be based on comprehensive community goals that are economically, socially, and environmentally sustainable. Dropping an out-of-scale, urban, ideologically-derived solution smack dab in the middle of our sleepy little town was not going to cut it." That's from page four of the preface of his book, and I'd like to say that I couldn't agree more. In this case, he's referring to sleepy little town Mill Valley. I'm reading this statement as a representative of the voters of Fairfax, because by report of dozens of members of the public, many people signed a petition for a referendum because of information which, after asking for clarification, they believed to be untruthful. I believe, if provided with an uncomplicated description of the rezone item and the adopted goals, objectives, and programs in the Housing Element of our general plan, that the majority of Fairfax residents would not have so immediately signed a petition for a referendum. The customized approach undertaken by hundreds of volunteers and present and past town council and planning commissioners in order to fulfill the requirements of the state law while protecting and honoring our planning policies and the commitment to preserving the character of our Fairfax would not be inciting such distrust in people if they were informed instead of afraid. Granted, it is very clearly our responsibility to produce an understandable version of these policies and to invite the input, continue to answer the questions, and listen to the concerns of the public. I'm committed to improving this aspect of our work. Looking forward, if the referendum is valid, we are forced to rescind the ordinance or take this to the public via the ballot. We are rendered unable to revisit any part of the item covered under the ordinance regarding rezoning. Putting this on the ballot is a cost to the town, and in the meantime, it puts multiple funding opportunities for transportation infrastructure improvements on hold and not just the one. We've been barred from reconsidering the item, which would have taken into account information and answers to the questions asked by the referendum supporters regarding the rezoning. We're also rendered out of compliance with California state law. If the petitioners believe that the state is usurping what should remain under local control, then I really have to wonder why they're holding the town hostage as a means of standing up to the state. This seems to me to be a fight against ABAG's determinations and RENA, which is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. This action is punishing and disrupting no one but the individuals remaining unhoused in the general tranquility of our town. When the public is confused and knows not what they are signing their name to, we are not acting with integrity but fear-mongering by raising red flags, drawing dots, connecting hot buttons on issues which really have nothing to do with the actual task before us. We're good at undoing things, but the work is in finding the solutions and joining the groups which have undertaken the work with passion and enthusiasm. Closing Bellinas Road has no connection to the rezoning action before us, and specifically of the church previously zoned UR7 and the Tana Lima site previously zoned CL, which are rezoned PDD. Entering into our three planned workshops, which are scheduled to begin the process of collectively discussing the town center element of the general plan with an angry and already divided public will affect the character of our town. To cite that the mistake in the Housing Element body in the appendix table regarding the wall property was intentional assumes the worst of the staff. This property was not part of the rezone and is and was zoned UR10, 10 potential housing units for the 100-acre property. This form of mistrust is not a progress-oriented stance. Assumptions which are declared as fact ignite a fire and force us to draw a line between one side and the other in order to play a containment game. This is not a model which is of service to finding a solution, but just an extinguisher being played back and forth like a hot potato. Our GPAC, our G-PIC, our B-PAC, our C-CAC, our Affordable Housing and Open Space Committee's meetings over the past 12 years and the numerous workshops offered the public ample opportunities to contribute to the process of creating the Fairfax general plan in each of its elements. In November, at a final meeting of Combined Planning Commission, Council, Affordable Housing, and Open Space Committee, which was publicly noticed, the group reviewed the Housing Element in detail before giving its blessing to submit to the state. There were no issues raised at that time. Regardless of what path this issue takes, please understand that it is my hope and my request of the members of the Fairfax community and beyond who are faced with the challenges of untangling the complexities of housing people in a county which has the highest cost of housing in the state, is that you please become informed, ask questions, bring your concerns and opinions and doubts, educate us, and please contribute to the vital work of how we creatively house the people who provide us the services and teach our children, while understanding that we must act within the confines of the California state law. Fairfax is lucky. We are lucky to have a smart, creative, and dedicated staff, and I'm impressed with the way they communicate with the public, and the feedback I receive from the public has been complimentary. We're a cohesive council, and my hope is that our collective efforts moving forward can be undertaken with integrity and from a platform of assuming good in place of ill intent. Thank you for listening, everyone.
Okay, I'll go. Mine's not as planned, but hopefully it'll speak from the heart. I'm the one who put item number 18 on the agenda. Last month, I moved to continue this item because it felt like it wasn't done, and there were some Ts that weren't crossed, and there's some misunderstandings in terms of exactly what the language said. And that move to continue it died 2 to 2. Renee then moved to approve it, but direct staff to fix the problems that, you know, the typos and things like that. And I voted with that. At this point, you know, I'm kind of sorry I did, because on further reflection, yes, you know, we have great staff, and we can hopefully trust them to do the right thing with oversight from council and the members of our community, which is important. What happened, if there's an earthquake, you know, we're dealing with moments of the day, this is the type of thing that came through my head, and I said, well, you know, we need to look at this again. And so I knew that, I was comfortable voting for it, because I knew that I could, after voting for it, put it on the agenda for this meeting so that we could open up the discussion again and talk about it more, get all the Ts crossed and make it really fit Fairfax. And while the end of this process was rushed, driven a lot by our desire to, as was mentioned earlier tonight, there's, the Chevron station brought it to our attention, that our Formula Store ordinance, which is also known as the Change Store Ordinance, didn't apply to a lot of downtown where a lot of people thought it did. But it came to light through that process that it didn't. And so that was one of the things, kind of putting a fire under everybody, to say, well, you know, we need to fix that problem with the Formula Store ordinance, which is one of the things that was rolled into this thing that was in front of us, that we passed last month. The problem with getting things done fast is not everything gets done right, and it's really important to get it all done right, which is why I put agenda number 18 on here so that we could make sure it was done right before it was passed. Because the referendum, the collected signatures, was filed this afternoon instead of, for instance, tomorrow afternoon, which would have been perfectly legal, that means that we can't talk about it and make a decision to change things and kind of correct it tonight, or start that process tonight. And so that's unfortunate, because we don't get a chance to talk about it. I mean, we get a chance to talk about it here, but we don't get a chance to decide about it and which way we're going forward. It's important to, I think we've heard something about what this housing is, some of its existing, some of its senior housing that's built, that's designed to be affordable to the seniors in our neighborhood, some of its workforce housing that's designed to be affordable for the people that work in our community and right now are-- for the people that work in our community and, right now, are commuting long distances to get here. Our kids are growing up. They're becoming that, you know, a little older, you know, they're no longer living at home. It'd be nice if they had a place to live in the community. That's what this type of thing is for. I mean, it's affordable housing because it fits in in the kind of place where young people like to live, where workers are able to live and afford things. And really, a lot of effort has gone into this to make it fit Fairfax. It's not shoehorning in a big box, wind cup factory-style thing in Fairfax. I mean, that's the last thing anybody wants in any community, as we've heard from the reaction in those communities. It's really something that a lot of volunteers and a lot of different people have worked on for years to try to make something that fits in Fairfax, just as the way Bennett House fits in Fairfax. I think it's too bad that we've rushed to get to this place. And as Renee spoke of, the polarization that comes out of a lot of people saying, oh, wait, we can't, you know, let the sky fall and do this. I think it's really important to talk to each other and listen and not rush things through. And because rushed stuff is not the right way to do it, you get an inferior project. I mean, I think people have worked long and hard and carefully to try to craft something that works for our Fairfax community, and we owe it to them to do the right job on the tail end of it and finally crafting something that doesn't let Airbag tell us how we're going to run our community, that lets us tell A-BAG and the state what works for Fairfax, which I thought that this was an effort to do. So, thanks.
Thank you, Wolf. There's no other questions. Larry?
I just want to make a brief, just more of a narrative and not just questioning, you know, some of the flaws in the plan. I don't think we would have undertaken this rezoning unless we were obligated to do that by the state of California Housing and Community Development and some of the statutes that have been passed. The state has set very ambitious housing goals for the state of California, and through housing and community development and some of their agency appointees like A-BAG, they impose regional housing needs assessments throughout California. And that is why we took this up. I don't think anybody here really had a desire to rezone Fairfax. We felt that we're under the gun, there's funding opportunities that we could avail the town to if we had an approved housing element. And we've been at it for 10 years. And we, one of the first attempts we made was called the mixed-use housing, which raised heights in the central commercial district, raised densities, and that was rejected by the council. And instead, we went back and we tried to do what we called a homegrown plan, which was, as Renee said, using our building standards that we've developed over the decades here in Fairfax, in particular, the central commercial zone, which is residential over retail as a matter of right, no conditional use permit. But in so doing, we stuck to our 28-and-a-half-foot height limit, we stuck to our two-story limitation, so you can't have an extra third story, and we stuck to our density. And when I was first elected to the council in 2003, those were the metrics. Keep your height limits, keep two stories, don't increase density. And in negotiating with HCD, our staff actually accomplished that for the most part. So the rezone of the commercial highway to central commercial essentially incorporated existing zoning standards into the commercial highway zone. I think there are some wrinkles in doing that that have maybe we should have discussed more thoroughly, including the fact that there are density bonuses given to whoever develops that property if they set aside a certain amount of it that is considered affordable. There are certain limitations on community participation under a new bill that was passed by the state legislature, SB 743, which takes parking and traffic out of the mix as far as how we can control certain development. So I think we actually did pretty well in that part of it. I think, and I would also add, I've been on the Affordable Housing Committee for four or five years, and I support the affordable housing projects at the Lutheran Church and on Olima. But what I also support is the right of the people to be informed and comfortable with what we do. And when we have citizens that come in, informed citizens, involved citizens, who point out some inconsistencies, some textual problems, some procedural problems that need to be addressed, my feeling is that those concerns need to be addressed and ironed out. And that's why I voted to continue it. And that's why I voted against adoption, because I felt that it was rushed, that there was no reason to do it like that, and that we're much better off bringing people in, sitting down at the table, and working things out with them. And unfortunately, in a sense, the referendum that has been presented hamstrings us, at least tonight formally, from doing that, which is unfortunate, but I think can give birth to a new conversation and new efforts for us to take another look at it, talk to people, iron out the concerns, and go forward as a community, which I think is very important for Fairfax. And just one other thing I wanted to add. There's a lot of communities throughout California that don't have approved housing elements. I looked on the internet, just doing some research, as of October of 2013, according to an article in the Orange County Register, about half, half the counties and cities in California don't have approved housing elements. So this is a big challenge for all of us. And rezoning is a big deal in Fairfax. It is a hot-button issue. And I just want to say, I think when the council acts, we need to try to get everybody at the table and try to address everybody's concerns. And I think, in a sense, that's where we fell down the last time, and maybe going into that vote, we fell down. We didn't really bring enough people in to the conversation beforehand. And I take responsibility for that. I, you know, I don't want to play the blame game. I don't believe in it. I also believe we have good staff who've worked hard for our town and done the best they could do to follow up with the direction that we gave them. So I'm, I don't mean to be sort of trying to play both sides. It's just, I see both sides, and I think it's kind of unfortunate, in a way, we are where we are, but I also am confident that I think we will move forward and hopefully come together and address everybody's concerns. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Any other comments before we turn this over to the public? All right, with that, let's open up the public hearing. As always, three minutes, five if you're members of a group. Right. Open time, not public hearing. Civics Lesson 101.
Is this open timer?
No, it's open time for public expression on anything you want, and in the spirit of you, I hope it's on something else.
In the spirit of me. You know, today, read about the Supreme Court basically changing the floodgates on campaign contributions. And about all that comes to mind is something that I've gotten a button that I made a long time ago, which is something that I say, "I'm ashamed to be an American, and I'm proud of it," as opposed to the other way around. About 46 years ago, on, I think, Saturday, on the Fourth, Martin Luther King was shot and killed. Gandhi was killed and shot. How many people that actually have a heart and a soul and try and get people to work together for something worth working on get taken out of the game? I go stand at the hub some days and bother commuters with little signs as they're stuck there in traffic, and I watch people eating their breakfast, putting on their makeup, squirming in their cars, wanting to be someplace else. I have stupid little signs that say things like "driving nowhere fast," or one day I had one that said, you know, "It's been three years since Fukushima, which is still spewing. And what the hell are we doing about it?" You know, what are we doing about it? Just like Citizens United, just like affordable housing for our community, just like, how many of us drive? How many of us heat our homes? How many of us overly heat our homes rather than like putting on a sweater or shirt? How many of us even consider the water that we use being pumped with electricity and all that we use? What are we giving back? How many of us consider the clothing that we're wearing on our bodies, whether it's made by virtual slave labor and whether it's made by fabrics and dyes which might give to the earth, or whether it's just creating poisons and landfills and toxic mess? Anyway, what I'm getting at is how are we living and what are we leaving behind? And how are we working together? I don't see us working together. I see these guys doing the best they can, trying to fit into some stupid system of laws which has absolutely nothing to do with reality. The laws that we have in our world are all about ownership. And right now, we're owning this planet, and it's all about us and our money. What about every other living thing on the planet? It's like free speech. You have free speech if you're wealthy, like what happened today or Citizens United. But what about any plant, any animal, any living ecosystem? Do they have any voice? Do we think about that when we build our buildings, when we drive our cars, when we overly heat our homes? Do we try not to consume? I don't know the answer to any of these questions. I just know that I'm greatly disturbed. And it's like, it's crucifying for me to witness our society and how we live. And as I stand there at the hub and watch us all drive around in our cars, not wanting to be there, the sign that seemed to bother people in their cars more than anything, which was about a week ago, was I just had a single sign that said, "Why?" We don't ask why. We don't question our beliefs. We don't question our thoughts. We just come out with our guns. Why? Why do we do what we do? Why are we living how we're living? And why aren't we fixing this world?
Somehow, I'd ask you to speak for another hour and a half. Joe?
Good evening. My name is Joe Carson. I live at 36 Scenic Road. I've lived in Fairfax for 28 years, and I've always loved it. I've always felt right at home here in Fairfax. I'm hoping that we can listen to each other tonight and respect each other and work in a positive way toward our shared goals. I love Fairfax because it is interesting, dynamic, and has a diverse population of very creative people. However, two sectors have very little offered to them: our seniors and our own young adults, our kids who are ready to move out of the house. They can only rarely afford to live here, so they often move far away, which destroys our communities. There's no continuity. And our seniors, too, have only a very few options here in town for when they get old enough that they feel they can't maintain their own place anymore. I care about these people. I don't want our town to turn its back on our own citizens. Prior to the vote a month ago, we had a large section of what's called highway commercial zoning, which is car-oriented along Sir Francis Drake. This zoning type allows big stores with big parking lots. That's what that kind of zone is. Car-oriented means there are more cars. I think we have enough of those. The town rezoned it to be like our little downtown area at Bolinas and Broadway called Central Commercial. That area, with its small stores which have apartments or offices overhead, is pedestrian-friendly. It is less likely to generate traffic than highway commercial. Also, the plan included working with a church to put in certain amount of senior housing behind the church. This seems to me like a great thing for a church to do. And seniors who have given up their independent housing are less likely to drive cars, too. They are much more likely to use buses or shuttles to get to the store. Another area that is part of the new zone is at Tenolima, where the town was in favor of encouraging an artists' cooperative with live-work and shared studio spaces. I think that it would provide an attractive option for some of our own kids who are turning into young adults and feel like they have to move far away to live. And this is a population which is much more likely to use bikes to get around locally, so they wouldn't necessarily be generating that much traffic either. The zoning change also effectively extends our no-chain store ordinance to cover these areas which weren't covered before, which I feel is a good thing. So between having highway commercial zones like they did before and having central commercial, which is what they changed it to, I am thinking that we would get less traffic and more opportunities for our own seniors and our own youth with the central commercial zoning that was voted in on March 5th. We all want to keep traffic down and keep Fairfax wonderful like it is. It is just a matter of figuring out the best ways to do this. Let's work together to create a beautiful future for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Diane?
Diane Hoffman, 33 Portius. Is it on? The whole thing about parking and what Larry mentioned, that not being able to talk about the parking and the traffic, that is really not okay. Already, Sir Francis Drake, there's a lot of apartment buildings, and most of those apartment buildings do come with one parking space per unit. Most apartments, there's two cars with them. And when I went collecting signatures, for example, in June Court and in Village West, those people were complaining and saying that their lives are miserable right now because of the parking issue. People in the apartment buildings don't have enough place to park, even though they have one place per unit, so they end up parking in June Court, which is open parking. But then the people who live in June Court don't have enough parking. If people visit people in June Court, I was told by everyone in June Court practically signed the petition, that they have to park way, way down in town, and then someone has to come and pick them up and take them. And so having 22 units on Olima Road with eight parking spaces, and these are people who are working, to expect them to be taking the bus and not have cars and take the bus for their grocery shopping or going to Trader Joe's, to me, is very insulting to those people, like somehow they don't rate a parking space. And of course, they're going to have cars, and they'll be parking six blocks away. I have a friend who lives in Berkeley. She lives above a commercial building. She's second story. It doesn't come with parking. She parks six blocks away every night and walks to her place, and in the morning, walks to wherever she can find her car. And the main thing about, for the home for older people, I love Bennett House. I have friends in Bennett House. They have 69 units and 36 parking spaces, which are always full. And it's also insulting to say, old people can take the bus, they don't have cars. You could be over 55 and live in Bennett House. There's people who are driving, and they're still 80, 85 years old. The worst thing you could do to an older person is take away their car. They need that car if they're still able to drive, and they need to park by where they live because they can't park six blocks away. So as Larry said, there's a lot of things that need to be worked out on this, and it's very unfortunate it was pushed through when a lot of us practically begged you to hold off. off and let's talk about it, you know? And I guess that we felt the only thing we could do after it passed was the referendum. It was a done deal. And everybody who I had sign, I asked them, and they didn't even know about it. So I think there, as Renee said, there's a group of people, you know, the people who know people around here, who are part of this little group, and then there's everybody else in Fairfax, the people who live all over Fairfax, who really, honestly didn't know.
Thank you, Diane. Niccolo.
Niccolo Calderero, 165 Frostak. Pat, Renee, really, you're saying you're charging us with lying to the people of Fairfax after listening to your town manager explain all the problems with it? I mean, we went out and we did our duty. We showed the people what was really in the ordinance. We talked about the problems, and we talked about basically how you obfuscated. There's no affordable housing that's in this project. Basically, affordable housing has to be financed, and I have worked on nonprofits that financed housing. I know. None of these sites are going to provide affordable housing. There's two different things here: low-cost housing for people who are working here, and I walked door to door, I didn't find one person who worked in Fairfax who were living in the existing housing, okay? And half of that was rental. I think we did our duty. And also, I just want to say that, you know, I don't think that Fairfax voters are easily confused. I think that they are really pretty savvy, and that's what I heard from them. Now, when I was a child, I went with my sister on the key system from Hayward, where we had our farm, all the way to Playland and Sutro Baz in San Francisco. Now, that key system ran across the Bay Bridge, and the Bay Area Council that created A-Bag and is a regional, was a regional buyer that created all this regional planning, got rid of the key system to make it easier for people to drive cars, and that spread the sprawl all out into the suburbs, and that was their regional idea of planning then. Then, when traffic got so terrible, people couldn't get anywhere, and we had smog in the bay, then they started to do BART, and now we're doing SMART. I was on the G-PAC for eight years with Terry Avuar. We read about the housing elements. We found out that no affordable housing, no appreciable affordable housing was built since 1970 because of the housing elements, that it's a fraud, and basically, at that time, only forty percent of the towns were in violation of the housing elements. Now, it's fifty percent because people realized it was just not working. Also, in nineteen, in 2002, I brought Chief Counsel of A-Bag Moy here to talk to our council. When I was on the council, and I asked him point-blank, "How many towns have been denied money because they didn't have their housing elements?" He said, "Zero. They can't do it." Okay, so if I ask you to get out of bag, and I think that we stopped the housing element for eight years from being completed, Terry and I and other people, because we understood that it's an issue of local control versus Sacramento telling us what to do. Now, basically, you can't tell the people of Fairfax, "Oh, we're going to build low-cost housing for your children," when you don't have the money to do it, okay? I have set up, I've worked on housing development corporations. We could set one up, and we could get money to build low-cost housing in Fairfax if we wanted to do that. If that's what the people of Fairfax want to do, then let's do that. But I think that we have to decide, do we want the town to grow, or do we want to rehab existing buildings to make them more efficient and to make them cheaper so people can actually live there and their children can live here? If we want to think about this carefully, then let's use our noggins, and let's go about it in a way that we're not told what to do by Sacramento.
Thank you, Niccolo. Ma'am.
Hi. My name is Liesel. I live in probably one of the most trafficky corners in Fairfax, at the corner of Pacheco and Dominga. I moved here after living in San Francisco for about twenty years in a tiny rent-controlled apartment, and we never drove anywhere except to come over to Marin to visit our relatives. And over the years, those visits became less about hiking, which is what Marin people do with their families, and more and more about elder care. So we decided finally, like, screw it, let's just move to Marin. We're driving over here three times a week to visit, you know, aging grandparents and parents, and we thought, well, it's the perfect time. We've been scrimping and saving for twenty years. We, it's the bottom of the market. We've got public, middle class, you know, really, public sector jobs, middle-class, solid jobs. We still are employed. We can do it. We got over here, and it was so demoralizing to find a house that was within our price range, and we looked and looked and looked. We actually ended up looking for three years, and every time we found a house that was within our price range, it was kind of like either it was a tear-down or they were going to, we were going to buy it, but then we were going to have to evict an elderly, disabled person who lived here for twenty years, or a single mother with three kids living in a single, you know, bedroom cottage out in the valley. So we were a little freaked out about that, but we were spared the horror of having to evict somebody, which we probably wouldn't have done anyway as former tenants, because every time we tried to look at those houses, they were bought cash down, no contingencies, by a speculator. So, you know, I'm just kind of concerned about watching Marin change over time. My in-laws talk about it all the time, and what has made Fairfax really special to us is the kind of people that live here. And I love the conversation we're having tonight because I'm learning from people, even people I don't agree with, and maybe we'll all come up with something. But, you know, we finally bought this little tiny house, and we didn't evict anybody, and we didn't foreclose on anybody, and then after we bought it, housing prices started to go up again, which is great in some ways, but then we started to hear from neighbors that we really liked, like, "Oops, sorry, got to go. We're getting evicted, and my landlady can finally sell the house, so we're out of here." My little brother-in-law, who's in his twenties, had to move out because he just couldn't afford it, and he was like sharing a bedroom with somebody else in an apartment in town. So I just want to keep thinking about, you know, what is the balance? Because I don't like huge developments either, and yet at the same time, I think that a town is more than the collection of buildings that makes it up. It's also the people that are here, and how can we retain that mix? The artists, the free thinkers, and some of those people that maybe some don't make that much money but really contribute to this town. And so I hope we'll all keep an open mind about that. The thing that has really impressed me here in Fairfax has been the way that Fairfax has thought through various measures. So I try to keep learning about Fairfax. We've got the whole safe routes to school thing. That's amazing. We've done a pesticide ban, stood up to the state of California. We've got this whole ban on smart meters, which is really cool, too. So I'm hoping there's some way we can come up to get some affordable housing in whatever fashion that makes it work for our town, and just going to put out there that I was in Fort Bragg for a business trip and saw the coolest affordable housing that I've ever seen, which was these tiny cottages for seniors that were all LEED certified and really adorable, and I kept thinking, well, that would fit here. And I don't know if there's any way to do that. It may be absolutely impossible, but, you know, kind of hoping because I like that kind of mix. And that's just my personal story, and I hope to learn more from everybody as the process goes along.
Thank you. Sir.
Chris Jones, 115 Willow Avenue, Fairfax. I thank the town council for all you do. It can't be easy at times, especially when you deal with the damned if you do and damned if you don't issues. Tax increases, parking, traffic and development are hot-button items guaranteed to draw the attention of town residents and businesses owners. There should be no surprise, therefore, at the reaction of the communities, the plan to increase housing by one hundred and seventy-two or one hundred and forty-three or whatever the number is. If the town council doesn't get input or feedback from the community earlier in the process when discussing hot-button items, it's probably because the methods used to announce the proposals failed to reach the community. You can't think to yourselves that that's, no one's interested, and you can just move on. The council should be asking itself, "We know this is of interest to our community. How do we get the word out that we need their input?" I know that growth is as inevitable as change, and I agree that affordable housing for service workers, seniors, teachers, and public safety personnel is desirable. However, as a resident of Fairfax, I want to know what our options are before accepting a plan which could destroy quaint and quirky feel of the downtown Fairfax I love, make parking more difficult than it already is, and add to our traffic woes. As other Bay Area cities withdraw from A-Bag, I want to know what the pros and cons are of remaining in A-Bag, particularly in the self-determination of our town's future development plans. Lastly, as an emergency manager and responder since 1999, I'm very concerned over the town council's identification of certain housing development under the town's amended housing element plan. The town of Fairfax will need the few remaining open areas for the staging of disaster response personnel, equipment, and supplies when a disaster strikes, which it will. These are life, safety issues which need to be considered in the final site selections. I look forward to the opportunity for the Fairfax community to have input into the proposed housing development plan. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my opinion.
Thank you.
Bruce Ackerman, 17 Valley Road. Two things. One, this issue is, in my mind, not about A-Bag, it's about Fairfax, and I just want to try to bring that back. It is about whether we choose to find housing for our seniors. My mother, my parents, both of them as seniors whom we took care of here, we were associated with that church, with the Lutheran Church, because my mother went there. And I knew a lot of the people in that congregation took photos of the entire congregation. We had a lot of fun together. I don't know what the median age of the congregation was, but I would guess around eighty-five. That they are building, they want to build senior housing, and they are working along toward being able to do that. They do have a plan in place, and they're, it seems like they could be successful if we do not scuttle their ability to do so. And they want to do it because they are seniors, and they know the need is there. My wife, as a midwife, works with young families, and we know firsthand how incredibly difficult it is for people who have grown themselves, grown up in this community and are now starting a family and can't afford to live here. There is not one way they can find a place to live here. That is the biggest danger that we have to our way of life. If we think about whether new housing is going to ruin our way of life, well, what could ruin our way of life is for us to become a bedroom community that is only affordable by the ultra-wealthy. We need to figure out how we can keep diversity and build diversity in this community. That's what this is about. It's not about A-Bag. Telling somebody else to go take a hike is telling ourselves to go take a hike. So there's something that we could do about this petition, which is to look at the fact that it is frankly illegal because the people who signed it, as Renee referred to, many, many people who signed this petition didn't know what they were signing. The numbers that were put out were not understandable. Some of them were frankly wrong, like saying that the wall property was being rezoned is completely spurious and incorrect and has no basis in fact. Saying that one hundred and seventy-two units would be built in Fairfax is not correct. And so, this petition is not legal, and it's now standing in the way of us doing anything at all until November, and then if it passes, it'll stand in the way for another year. And it's costing us a huge amount of money to have it on the ballot. It's stopping us from doing a lot of things. I would love to see the people who signed this petition lighten up and, seeing that we're having this conversation, take this thing off the table so that our town is able to function. If not, I would suggest the council consider taking it off the table, which you could do, because if you challenge it legally, it won't stand up. And the reason for that would be so we can have the conversation, not so we can make one side or another side or any side win or lose or back down or step up, but so we can have the conversation, which is what we need to do. That's what the general plan was, was a conversation. That's what I would like to see us continue to have, and throwing this on the table doesn't help that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Sir.
Hi. Graham Irwin, 88 Dominga Avenue. Primarily, I am here to express regret. Larry mentioned citizens that are informed and involved, and I am neither, except I am now as a function of having signed this petition. And a lot of it's my responsibility for not being informed enough at the time, but quite frankly, the people that came to talk to me about it are friends and neighbors, and they seem very concerned, and I had no idea of the ramifications of signing that other than supporting them in something they were very concerned about. A bigger regret of mine is that I feel that, and I will assume it was unintentional, that I was fundamentally misled in that, because my wife, by the way, also signed this petition, and I talked to her about what she was told, and we were both told that the reason for the petition was that the zoning was going to have the wall property go up to twenty-five units, and that the town would thereby get money and use it to close Bolinas Road. That was the extent of what was presented. And again, I don't assume that the people were intentionally misleading. They may have misunderstood it themselves, but this, you know, now that I begin to learn more about this far after the fact and far too late, I owe an apology to all of you because I feel that you're all working very hard, and you've been doing a great job, and you're hamstrung by this, and my signature on this does not reflect my values at all. So that's basically what I want to say. I confess to being the biggest fool in this town in terms of having my name on something that I had no idea what I was signing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer.
Hi. Jennifer Hammond, nine Iron Springs Road, Fairfax. So first of all, I just want to say that I support the housing element. It's something that it wasn't, this whole process wasn't rushed. We're talking about years of meetings and community involvement, and I'm sorry for the people who didn't know about it or weren't involved. That's regretful. But there were a lot of people that were involved, and so the housing element was adopted by council. So I think there's some confusion about what the ordinance, oh, sorry, there's some confusion about what the ordinance does. So the ordinance is simply reflecting what the policy, the policy that was adopted in the housing element of the general plan. So this wasn't a rushed vote last time because it was something that had already been decided, honestly. And so at this point, putting, you know, there was a petition for a referendum to put the ordinance on the ballot, and this is illegal because the policy is in the housing element, and that's something you can't change by ordinance. So to, if the voters rejected the ordinance on the ballot, that would mean that there would be an illegal zoning map left and would cause all kinds of problems for the town and not being in compliance with the state of California, which is a real issue, and it creates liability and, you know, issues for the town and opening it up to lawsuits. So unfortunately, it's just, it's not something that the town will be able to allow to go on to the ballot. And I do have case law to support that, and I have sent a letter by email today, and I will provide Michelle with copies of that and the attachments before the end of the meeting tonight. So anyway, I just want to say that, you know, population does grow. We haven't had a lot of building or development in Fairfax over the last, you know, fifteen years, as Garrett has said. I think the housing element is very reasonable in how it was broken down to allow for permitting for new, for new, for new units, and it doesn't mean they're going to actually be built. I think it all seems, sounds very reasonable. Anyway, thank you very much for your time, and I hope we do the right thing. All right, bye.
Thank you, Jennifer. Frank.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. About a month ago, a number of us appeared before the council in response to the posted notice for ordinance seven seventy-eight. We asked for, we came and we spoke, and we said we see a number of problems with ordinance seven seventy-eight, and we were asked you for a thirty-day continuance so we could help you correct what was wrong with seven seventy-eight. That did not happen. The majority of the council went ahead and adopted it. We didn't have a lot of We didn't have a lot of choices, and so we went for a referendum. It was the fairest way to handle it. Today, three Fairfax residents turned in 1,029 signatures on 96 different petitions, same petition, but 96 petitions. It was, they were gathered by 42 people. The rezoning that occurred, and everyone says, oh, the wall property was not rezoned. Well, I've got your town staff report, I've got ordinance 778, and in fact, the wall property was rezoned. Section 11 Fairfax Town Code, zoning districts, Upland Residential Zone. It's specifically listed. The parcels are listed right in the zoning ordinance. If you weren't rezoning the wall, you would not have listed those parcels in the zoning ordinance. Just a little history. The town zoned the wall, Upland Residential, a number of years ago. At one time, we had, the 1968 general plan had a range, had .1 to .25 in it. And that range covered a lot of these Upland residential parcels, well, Upland parcels all around town. We, the density was determined by, in environmental study, a capacity study, looking at slope, landslide issues, drainage, et cetera, et cetera. We got an application in the 80s for Fairfax Hills, and it was zoned that way, .1 to .25. The applicant wanted 20, 20 units up there. The Fairfax Town Council gave the applicant eight units, because we wanted the .1. We were sued by Fairfax Hills. We lost that court battle. The judge said, you know what, you've got a, you've got a general plan over there, that talks about .25, and so you've got to give them .25 dwelling units per acre, 20 units. Fairfax Town Council signed an out-of-court settlement granting to 20 units based on .25 units per acre. Two of us wanted to appeal it up to a First District Court of Appeal, but that didn't happen. The majority of the council signed the agreement. The wall property, the density is determined by the general plan. In fact, there's a code section in your zoning ordinance that says specifically, the minimum building site area should be identical to the acreage expressed in the Fairfax general plan classification for the site. That's under 17124050, dealing with Upland residential zones. The general plan, whether we like it or not, it's all written there, and it says inventory of sites for potential residential development. It lists all the parcels, and it gives allowed density, .25 dwelling units per acre. That's all we had to go on. That's what's in your current general plan. That general plan was adopted October 22 of 2013. On October 31, ownership of the wall property changed hands. I know the town council needs to go back, reopen the general plan, and amend it, and correct that mistake. Otherwise, that developer is going to walk in with this section out of your general plan, and that developer's going to demand the .25 acres, just as what happened, just what happened to us up on Fairfax Hills property.
Frank?
Yes?
Going to have to bring it to a close.
Okay, sure. So all the projects you've talked about could have gone through a process and been approved. They could have done it individually. When you ran a blanket rezoning, zoning over 230 parcels in town, and they're all listed right in your zoning ordinance, they're, we're not making this stuff up, they're all listed. It was just a tragic mistake for our community, and we had no choice but to go the referendum process. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Sir?
So my name is David Callahan, I live up the street on Alima, and I did sign the referendum, and based on what I heard today, I would sign it again. One of the big issues for me is, I was not aware. I do talk to my neighbors, I mean, right down the street from me, three houses down, they're talking about building 22 units. I can't often park in front of my own house, because there's no parking, and I think there needs to be a little dose of reality for people who think not allowing, not putting in parking spaces is going to have people not have cars. I mean, that's just not a reality in Marin. Pretty much, I've tried to take the bus to work, it really doesn't work if I come home late. I wind up basically stuck. And I don't mean to pick on you, but I heard you, the town manager, say a well-planned document. And what I would really like to see is a well-documented plan instead, because the truth is, is what I see is, I have no idea what workforce housing is, but I do know that lot, I drive by it multiple times a day, and 22 units on that lot is going to be very crowded. And let's be honest, it's going to impact the value of my property, and I think that's one of the reasons why a lot of us are here. It's going to impact my property values, I'm going to have a hard time parking. My daughter, who does live at my house, is going to have a hard time parking. I'm actually kind of shocked. I mean, I really understand the idea of Fairfax being a bunch of ex hippies coming in here and having a good time, you know, but I'm shocked at the low level of communication. I mean, we don't even agree on a plan that has been voted on, what the zoning issues are, it seems like. I mean, perhaps I'm wrong, but clearly, there's something that needs to be cleared out as far as zoning. So I'm, you know, I kind of think that needs to be cleared up before, you know, any more voting and whatever. And so it sounds like now it's on hold from the referendum, and maybe that's what needed to happen, because you guys really aren't clear on what's going on. I'm certainly not. And, you know, I wasn't planning on talking, I certainly didn't come prepared, I took a bunch of notes while I was in, I can't read half of them. But so, let me just say, I would sign the referendum again, and I think it needs to be really looked at. And again, for myself, 22, 22 units with eight parking spaces at the end of Alima, it's not a reality-based plan.
Thank you, sir. Shelley?
Shelley Hamilton, 134 Canyon Road. I do think that Fairfax will be judged not by the color of the design reviewed paint on our buildings, or the typos in our tables, but by the content of the character of our people, and the people who participate in this process. I came here tonight, I don't believe that we are a group of closed-minded protectionists ready to close our town gate and hoard our conservation spoils, unwilling to share our natural and cultural resources with our artists, our teachers, and our children. I believe that we are a progressive, empathetic, welcoming community of do-it-yourselfers that embrace collaboratively stewarding in an inclusive, affordable future for both our children and our grandparents to enjoy. And yes, there is a lot of work to be done. And yes, the town, the plan was a vision document, a general plan, not specific ordinances. That's what came, that was what was coming next. That was what was coming next, and will no longer be able to happen, probably for at least another year. I came here tonight to continue to participate in the public process. I read the agenda for the meeting, I read the staff report, to continue the process, to open it up to you. I came here to find out that I have been shut out. My voice doesn't count, because your vote tonight doesn't count. You can't continue the process, because you've been shut out of that process. And Edgar, yes, you did have a choice. You could have filed the petition tomorrow. You could have let the process continue tonight. There was recommendations by the staff to continue the dialogue, to continue the conversation, to let our voices count, to let your vote count, and to continue on, not just tonight, but on into the future. That can't happen anymore, possibly for another whole year. I'm sad that that conversation cannot go on. I'm sad that all of the people who came last time asking to dot the i's and cross the t's and get answers to their questions, yes, we can answer, get answers to our question, but we can't continue in the process, because the referendum has shut us out from doing that. We have a moratorium that's supposed to last until the zoning of the CCCH can be into effect. What's going to happen with that? That'll go on for another year. It'll go on at least until November, if it goes to a vote. All of this land, all of the business owners downtown who want to get a permit to put in a toilet, who want to sign a lease that require a use permit, won't be able to do that, because we have a moratorium in town, because we can't take action on the plan. We can't fix the t's, we can't dot the i's, we can't amend things in our plan, we can't move forward. Because this referendum was filed today. It could have been filed tomorrow, it could have been filed the next day, if people didn't get satisfaction, or didn't feel that the process was going to continue. But it wasn't. It was filed today. It sets an all, it sets a precedent going forward for public process, that I'm embarrassed to have Fairfax lead the way in. I don't know what you're going to do.
Thank you, Shelley. Ma'am?
Lynn Corwin, 629 Cascade. I want to say that I came to this meeting last month, and I got up here and I said, I know nothing about this. None of my neighbors know nothing, anything about this. I just found out about this today. And I said, please, can we just wait a month, so that we can figure out what was going on? And I could talk to my neighbors, and you pushed it through without listening, without hearing, that there were a lot of people. Frank got up and made some really important points that you didn't know the answers to. And if it was passed, you didn't know what was going to happen, and you pushed it through no matter what. And so I was one of those people that did the petition, because I said, I don't know what's going to happen, and you said, too bad. So I went around, and I talked to probably about 40 or 50 people, and not one person knew what was, that anything like this was happening. So if you said that you tried to get people involved, you did not do a very good job. And I think that that is really important, because maybe the plan was really good, but we didn't know about it. And so I think you need to think about that.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
My name is John Fitzpatrick. I live at 215 Butterfield in San Anselmo, and I work at 2096 Sir Francis Drake in Fairfax. I'm here on a separate topic. I'm just seeing if the town can work towards synchronizing the two traffic lights at the edge of town by Poncho Villa. One's at Sir Francis Drake in Willow, the other's at Sir Francis Drake in Suffield. Try to increase the traffic flow for commute hours, with emphasis on evening commute for westbound traffic. That's it.
Garrett talked to me about, where did it go? Jim?
I can speak to that. Your town, San Anselmo, has received a grant to look at the whole corridor up to Poncho Villa, and that has actually been brought up by members of the Planning Commission, and in fact, Commissioner Hamilton continues to bring that up. So we've made contact with your Public Works Director, we've expressed that concern, the ball's in your court. Go to your council, tell them we really like that to happen, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Shelby?
Shelby Lamott, 56 Manor Road. I'm here speaking as a citizen tonight. I'm saddened that this has come about the way it has, and I'm saddened that this has come about the way that it has, because this was a process, a public process, that has been going on for a very long time. This is part of the function of a town, and I'm sad that so many people who call themselves informed citizens have not been informed about the public process, because this has been going on a long time. Every single meeting that the Planning Commission had, two a month for years, on the general plan, every time it came up for the Affordable Housing Committee, for the GPAC, the General Plan Action Committee, the G-PIC, the General Plan Implamation Committee, these are all public meetings, publicly noticed in several places around town, that anyone can attend at any time, and they're all archived on the town website. So I'm a little frustrated, because a lot of people have put in untold hours, developing a very thoughtful, as Larry very well put, a very thoughtful plan, not increasing density, not increasing height, not increasing numbers of stories, working within our land, our complete area, really keeping the town character in mind. And now, we've got the gall and the paranoia to say that our town council and our staff is trying to mislead us, and to run around town with a petition full of lies. 172 units, use your brains, he said it tonight, he broke it down, you understand the numbers now, are not getting built. They're being zoned for. We've been zoned for a lot of units for a long time, and we've gotten two. So don't tell me these are going to be built in the next foreseeable future. So I'm here to support our town council, and the incredible work that our staff does, because they work their butts off for us, and they do a great job. And I'm mad, and I'm tired of good work getting stonewalled in Fairfax, and it's time to start paying attention, because we've worked hard to get to this point, and now we're stuck in the mud again. And that's what this town is about? I don't think so. Sorry to rant, but I've had it.
Thank you, Shelby. Ryan?
Hi, Ryan O'Neill, Iron Springs Road. I follow a lot of what's going on, and I don't usually have to chime in on everything, so I'm really trying these days to pick my topics and remind people of things. What I'm seeing here is very clear to me, and I want to convey this to everybody involved. The staff, it's about frustration. The staff must be incredibly frustrated, because they work on something with a goal and a checklist, they have to answer to bosses about how they're doing, making progress, putting out information, trying to get things done and make progress. The people who want their younger siblings, or the younger people and the older people to have a place to live are frustrated, because mom has to maybe move farther away, or their son can't afford to move here. The people who lived in Novato and saw the Whole Foods blockade go up downtown there, and even further, the people like me who grew up in Corder Madera and watched an amazing mistake, in my opinion, be made, right along Highway 101, blocking off one of the best highway views you have of the mountain. It's scary big. Even the town council of Corder Madera is upset. The people who saw that being developed, those two big properties, they're frustrated. And the town council is certainly frustrated. I read the whole general plan. I bet there's 20, 30 people tops that read that whole general plan. I didn't understand all that general plan, I'm not saying I'm a very smart man. But when I don't know the answers to things, I go find the people that know the answers to things. That's how I work. So there's a lot of frustration on a lot of different angles. But what I'm good at is, I'm good at bringing people together. When I first moved into this town, it was incredibly divisive. I am cautioning that we make decisions that are going to get us to that same divisiveness again. I mean, I listen to people here, you can hear the frustration. I know everybody in this room is frustrated, or you wouldn't be here unless you're paid. But at the end of the day, what I want to remind these groups of is that the staff, your job is not necessarily to finish the projects, although it's a good thing to be working towards. Your job is to make sure it's done with everybody. The people who want their older parent or younger person to move here, like Shelby said, their job is to get informed. This is not odd. When we had the Whole Foods, or I mean, the Good Earth moving in, and at the last minute, I remember Lou sitting up there, and the lady came in and dropped an environmental bombshell on us, all on the last day, right before we were going to do it, and he blew a top. But we should expect these things, because the truth is, is that no one really gets involved until the word, and it gets scary and it gets close. They are trusting you to be doing the homework, passing on the information, and making the choices for everybody. When someone on the council has to recuse themselves because they live too close, that shouldn't be seen as an opportunity to move forward, it should be an opportunity to slow down, make sure none of these people here, and none of these people in this town, become disenfranchised. The worst thing we can have in our town is to go back to how it was with disenfranchised people. What will happen is, you will spend all of your time, staff will spend all of its time, legal will spend all of its time battling each other, and no one will be working together, and no one will trust anybody. So the challenge to all the groups involved is to find a way to sit down at the charrette and figure it out, because obviously, everybody wants it to be done right. Nobody necessarily needs it to be done fast, and we certainly don't want... Nobody necessarily needs it to be done fast and we certainly don't want anybody to make a big mistake.
Thank you, Ryan. Sir?
John Sargent, 55 Madrone Road. Recently, I've been attending water board meetings and when you look at that monstrosity that happened at Wind Cup, it's an embarrassment to the people that voted for it. We can learn two things from that process, though. Apparently, the numbers mandated by ABAG or whatever state agency that was given to Corder Madera, once Corder Madera, after the fact, started looking into it, they found out those numbers weren't accurate at all. And instead of two hundred units being mandated, I think it was more like sixty or something. Secondly, I remember a Corder Madera councilperson saying, "My God, I wish we would have turned down the money and just not had this thing." ABAG and other union— other urban planners seem to think that if we have some higher density kind of housing, that people won't drive cars. And that's absolute nonsense. The people in Corder Madera will find that out once that building is occupied. So even though, because of our zoning ordinances, we won't have something like was built in Corder Madera, we will still be adding other cars to our already crowded streets. It's just not a good idea. I understood and signed the petition. And the reason I did that, and I'm spiting, have a conversation with our mayor, who was kind enough to fill me in on some of the details. I like things going to the voters. I don't think directly—I don't think that a lot of times when you say this code ordinance is going to be changed to this and whatever, the full impact is really known to the citizens of Fairfax. Something of this importance should have been widely publicized, not just with your normal things you do for other issues. There should have been notices placed all over town, even to the extent of putting a small notice in the Ross Valley Reporter so that people could be aware of exactly what's happening. These citizen groups that put in all this good time—I was at one of their early meetings —and the issues that were floating around was, "Why don't we make Town and Country a Jerry Garcia theme park?" And shit like that. And I never went back to participate in those groups anymore. This unfortunately is part of a bigger issue that I and over a thousand people have with this council, is that we don't feel we're being represented. You are very apt to consider green things and other things like that, but we have a business community that in parts not doing well and et cetera. And you know, the former councilperson— Pat, was that her name? I'm sorry. Before she left town, she thought her biggest goal was to have a Mandela painted on Bolinas Avenue. That's not my biggest goal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael?
Thank you. I also want to reiterate, I do really feel sorry for the staff. I feel the staff has kind of been the whipping boy under their direction and the input from the community to try to do things. The reason I spoke, which does absolutely contest what Renee said, if the council will recall, when this was originally voted on to approve this housing element, it was done at a special meeting that was not televised and there were only two people from the general public there, myself and Lou Vicero. David Winesoff, you were also not there. Barbara voted at that time, even though later she recused herself. And Larry was the only one that spoke. I think he said this was a slippery slope, that he didn't like where this was going. My contesting to this and why I'm very happy for the referendum or the petition is not that I do or do not want affordable housing. I can personally speak to how many people come to me that I would like to encourage that housing. I have my own daughter living on my property and I'd like to encourage all my children to live around me. But what I can say is whether it's my process to do something at my property or this process, I too would like to have the general public vote. I would like to see the general public be heard. And what was so discouraging to me was when the general public did come up, whether informed or not, but asked the council to explain things, they were shut down. Their voice was diminished. All of a sudden, the council felt that they knew more than the people that you're supposed to represent. Just a couple of facts. The average Marin County household has eleven point seven car trips per day. At only eleven car trips per day for a hundred and seventy-two units equals one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two car trips. I think people would like to vote on that. I also wanted to say that somebody said that, let's see, "We can't reverse—or we—if because of referendum, we can't now discuss this." Well, we are. And what I've heard through the whole process, even when I contested this at the special meeting when it was actually voted on and Jim was very vocal against this, and I said, "There is no proof publication. There's no CEQA, no EIR. There's notification to the property owners, let alone the people within five hundred feet." And I was told because of filing a mitigated negative deck, that it was not important or required until a specific development came forth by the specific developer, so it was not relevant. Well, if what I've heard that this is a living document, then I don't understand why we can't address the moratorium that one lady brought up and reverse this moratorium so we can all go forward and just hear this one issue. And I would really like the council to represent the greater majority of these people. I know whatever I say on this subject, because I will be before the whole community someday to do something, I will be held accountable to this. I will be crucified for not walking both lines politically, keeping my mouth shut. But whether I succeed or fail, I would like to see the council listen to the people and let everybody make input. That's what we call an open democracy. And that's why I am also here in Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. David?
This is— yeah. I didn't know whether I was going to say anything tonight or not. I kept walking back and forth. I do want to say that I think that this body here, this council, is one of the best councils we've had in a very long time. Not to diminish the work of past councils. I think the staff is a great staff. I was disappointed to see the tactic of the referendum, only because it does hamstring us from moving forward. We have problems. We've got a lot of problems. We have a ton of problems. Parking is one of them. And parking was a problem before tonight and will be a problem after tonight. And this is—we're going to have to tackle it. We also need to address housing. We need to address these problems and we can't hamstring ourselves. I would much rather have seen you guys come up and say, "Look, we have a thousand signatures here, you know, what are you going to do about it?" And give them an opportunity to respond to you. I think these guys really do work hard for us. And if there's any way you guys can withdraw the referendum, at least if that's a possibility and that you can hear these guys out and see if they can move in a way that you are satisfied, I would encourage you to do that. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you, David. And David Glick. Thank you, David.
David Glick.
Don't you know it?
David Glick, 297 Cascade Drive. I was one of the people who was getting signatures. I never felt for a moment that the council was doing anything sneaky, ever. And I have a lot of respect for the council and I think you all work hard. I'm listening to everything that's been said here and I think there are two things that can bring this town together because I think everybody in this room absolutely would like to see some genuine affordable housing, genuine affordable housing. And I think everybody in this room wants to make sure that whatever development goes forward, it's done in such a way that there are sufficient parking spaces for whatever amount of development we put into place because we all know that without that, there's going to be—the traffic is going to be much worse, the parking's going to be much worse. I have friends who live in the Redwood and I know that they do not have enough parking spaces there and many times—these are seniors—and many times people who come to visit them can't find a place to park nearby and they end up parking over in the—across the way in the market where they're not supposed to park. So the concern about congestion in parking was genuine. But it's obvious that everybody—that we're a progressive town and I think we all want to see real workforce housing, real affordable housing. I didn't see anything in this plan that really guaranteed that there was going to be genuine low-cost housing. And so if we could come together, if there was some way—I was listening to what Nicolo said—and if there's some way that we could put together a plan where we can bring genuine low-cost housing, but at the same time, do it in such a way that it doesn't add to the congestion and the traffic problems, I think that's—those are concerns that unify, I think, everybody in town. I'd like to see that happen. Thanks.
Thank you, David.
Mimi Newton, 139 Mono Ave. And I'll be brief. I think there's a little bit of schizophrenia going on here where people who are actually getting involved and trying to be engaged are being criticized while we're also saying, "Oh, people need to be more engaged." So I just want us all to remember that everybody's working really hard, not just the people that spend countless hours on the general plan and not just you guys and, you know, not just all the other people in this town who are being engaged and we should be praising them for being engaged. Maybe everybody's got a little bit of imperfection going on. Nobody's got the perfect solution here. I think, Larry, you were spot on last month when you recommended we kick the can down the road one more month and I'm sorry we didn't end up doing that. But I think we can just all be appreciative of the effort that everybody's trying to make here. Thanks.
Thank you, Mimi. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? If not, we'll close the open time for public expression. I'm sure the council would like to take a five-minute break and come back. Thank you. Okay, we're back. Everybody who's chatting in the back of the room, if you'd be so kind as to take it out into the hallway because the mics are picking it up. Let's try this again. Everybody who's having a conversation in the back of the—Frank, David, Lou, Mike, could you please exit the room so that we could have a quiet—thanks. Okay, we're back on and we're going to deal with the consent calendar. We're pulling number fourteen off the consent calendar. All other issues are on. Larry, would you like to speak specifically to number eleven?
Patrice Hickox? Let me just read this briefly. Okay. This is a—what's happened—the town is going to dedicate a bench in Bolinas Park to Nancy Helmers. And there's a proclamation that will go with it and—I'm going to read it and I'll be fast. Whereas Nancy Helmers was a longtime Fairfax resident and environmental advocate who passed away at home Thursday, November 21st at age eighty-two. And whereas Nancy was born in Lake Placid, New York, graduated from Smith College in 1953 with a Bachelor of Science. Whereas Nancy migrated west to the San Francisco Bay Area and was drawn to the beauty and small-town ambience of Fairfax, where she purchased her home in the 1960s during the Summer of Love. And whereas Nancy met the love of her life, Mr. Leslie Ellison, at the original Sleeping Lady Cafe on Bolinas Road in 1973 and spent the last forty years of her life together with him as partners in their home high atop Manor Hill. And whereas Nancy worked at UCSF Medical Center as a chemist, beginning in 1969 and retired in 1996 after a distinguished career in public service. And whereas, as a lifelong environmental advocate, Nancy dedicated thousands of hours to the protection of open space, wildlife corridors, and zoning standards in Fairfax and Marin County. And she was also a longtime member of the Marin Conservation League Sierra Club, It's Time for a Park at Marin Town and Country Club, and a graduate of Marin's Environmental Forum. And whereas the late supervisor Hal Brown selected her as his appointee to the Marin County Parks Open Space and Cultural Services Commission, where she served from 1994 to 2004 representing our second district. And whereas Nancy was a passionate advocate for numerous environmental and animal rights issues, including banning the use of toxic poisons to control mountain lion predation and other dated and counterproductive policies. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the council of the town of Fairfax that the town hereby dedicates a bench in Bolinas Park, Redwood Grove, to honor the memory of Nancy Helmers' life and her contributions to the greater Fairfax community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Larry.
Mayor, I wanted to make one comment about number nine and I need to recuse myself from number six as I'm a board member with Sustainable Fairfax.
Go ahead. So you're off—
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to consent item number nine and that is just to let people know and sort of proclaim in a happy way that Senate Bill Number 1014, it has been put together to create a statewide drug take-back program. This is going to—it's passed through one committee, but it would require the producers of pharmaceuticals to create, finance, and manage a collection system for pharmaceuticals. So this is the first time Alameda County worked very hard to get this through and they're back and forth and stopped in litigation, but this is the first time it's come to the state and it did pass through the first—first of what I assume will be many committees. So that's exciting news.
And it also has the California League of Cities Environmental Quality Section support. I checked on it today. And no doubt, we'll be talking about it in Ontario at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. Renee? Not Renee, Barbara.
Thank you. I just have one question, probably for the town manager on item six. So as part of the requirements for the Sustainable Fairfax contract, there's insurance requirements. And among other insurance requirements are required to have workers' comp insurance. I also see in the budget that we are paying for workers' comp insurance for Sustainable Fairfax. And having done a lot of contracts in my day, I'm unfamiliar with a contract where we would pay for something that's required by the contract, specifically an item like this. I don't want to demean the overall purposes of the contract and the work that Sustainable Fairfax does, but that strikes me as very odd.
I think the best way to describe it, it's kind of a cost of doing business similar to if they had to pay for a business license. Some contractors just go ahead and put that in their proposal. If the council's direction is not to include it, then we would go back to them and discuss that.
Our town attorney, if this is a standard to—I've never seen it. Usually, the insurance is required of contractors and they come up with it because it's part of their business.
Well, in my experience, it's not standard, but as the town manager says, it's something that certainly could be negotiated and so.
Okay, well, I don't want to hold for this issue, but I think in subsequent contracts, we should seriously consider that that's part of their cost of doing business is having that to preserve the safety of their employees. So I'm okay, as is right now.
Okay. With that, why don't we take number six separately and then we can bring Renee back. Do I have a motion to approve number six? Bragman Reed. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, with that in mind, we have two through sixteen with the exception of number fourteen, which we'll set off for another month. I'll take a motion on the rest of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Cola Bragman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Can I have the council's indulgence to move to the regular agenda because we have people here who want to go home? And we're also paying our contractor. And move number nineteen to right now and then take the Cheetahs Low thing, number twenty, and then go back and do the grand jury report and then twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Is that acceptable?
Worse for me.
Yes, sure.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Rin, uh, Michelle, one more time. We're going to do, we're going to hopscotch over the, uh, council members' reports. We'll do them later. We're going to move on to the regular agenda. We'll do nineteen, twenty, and then go back and do number seventeen. And John, were you unable to shut off the, the heat?
Oh, I moved zero.
It goes, you have to click it off.
That's it? Okay.
Okay. With that in mind, let's, uh, take a moment, see if they can shut off the sauna. Yeah, there's a lot of power when you're mayor.
I am now educated.
Um, let's move on to, uh, number nineteen. Garrett?
Sure. Item has to do with the pavement management program and policies for street improvements, and actually what I'd like to do is introduce Vijay from Harrison Associates. They're actually under contract with the MTC Metropolitan Transportation Commission on the PTAP program, and they're evaluating the roads in Marin County, and he would actually share with you, um, how a pavement management program works and his findings for Fairfax, and then after that, we'd go through a few of the staff recommendations related to your street policies and the PMP program, and then at that point, it'd probably be appropriate then to ask for questions and answers. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Harrison Associates to make a brief presentation.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Vijay Palichal, and this is, along with me is Marissa Assunzion. Uh, we are from Harrison Associates. Today, we'd like to talk about the, uh, the pavement management program, uh, which was grant-funded by MTC. We have updated, uh, the PMP for Town of Fairfax, and we've completed the project. Um, we'd like to go over, uh, the, the, uh, the project, uh, we, we've picked up a couple of, uh, items that we'd like to discuss, um, for this, and, uh, to even begin, before we get to that, I'd like to talk about the pavement management program itself and what exactly it is. Um, we've been, uh, Town of Fairfax has been using MTCs, that's Metropolitan Transportation Commission's Street Saver Program. It's an online database. It's an application that's used. Um, this computer-assisted method, it's, it's a program which is a computer-assisted method of organizing and analyzing pavement-related information. This particular program organizes, stores, and retrieves data. So there, it's an application, uh, with a lot of pavement management information, and it's also a database which has a lot of, uh, data put into streets. Um, it also makes quick analysis and calculations. So we have a lot of, uh, data that we have, that we work on, and, uh, we make a lot of analysis and calculations that, that project the work plan and various scenarios, funding scenarios. It also provides cost-effective maintenance strategies. So we, um, the, the whole intention, the, the whole, uh, objective of the pavement management program is to focus on preventive maintenance, uh, strategies where we end up, uh, the focus is on spending less and get more value for the money that you're spending. Now, why do we need a pavement management program? To begin with, it acts as an inventory tool. Um, you have all your street information populated in the database. It also acts as a condition assessment tool, where you calculate the PCI. The acronym PCI stands for Pavement Condition Index. It's a ranking given to each of the streets, ranges from zero to hundred, zero being the worst and hundred being the best street. Um, this Pavement Condition Index is calculated based on the maintenance information that's been in the program, and also based on the condition, the survey, condition survey that's performed every two years. It also, uh, the program also determines the needed work and funds. It identifies candidate projects, uh, for, uh, which, which are prospective projects for, uh, rehabilitation or preventive maintenance. It also determines the impact of funding alternatives. So we can, we could use multiple funding alternatives to see what the impact of PCI and the backlog is on these funding scenarios. I'm sure most of you must have seen this, um, age-old pavement deterioration curve. We have the, uh, the Pavement Condition Index on the Y-axis, and we have the H on the X-axis. Typically, um, an asphalt pavement lasts for about twenty-eight to thirty years. Lasts about twenty-eight, thirty years, and the first seventy-five percent, the per, percent of the pavement life of the pa, uh, the first, for the first seventy-five percent of the pavement life, there's a decline of about forty percent in the quality of the pavement. The next, for the next twelve percent, there's another decline of forty. So you're looking at a, a major decline in the curve there, where that's the point where we really need to focus on, and which is the pair, the pair, the preventive maintenance category. Preventive maintenance is, um, typically you could have a, a crack ceiling, a slurry ceiling, or any of the surface seals come under preventive maintenance category. The, the, uh, the meth, the, the focus of the program is to apply a lot of preventive maintenance treatments so that you end up spending a lot less, and that would be the point where you're, for any of the street, that you'd have to focus on preventive maintenance. So once you apply one set of treatment, a slurry seal or a cape seal, it extends the life for about seven years, and you come back and you apply another treatment, and it, it further extends the life of the pavement with just these preventive maintenance treatments. And we do not want to let the, uh, we do not want to let the program, the, the, the streets slide further down, and, and you'd end up applying more costly rehabilitative treatments, just overlays or reconstruct, you'd end up spending a lot more money than the preventive maintenance. Now, getting back to the, uh, the network information, we have about twenty-eight cent line miles, about fif, forty-five percent of the streets are residential, and about fifty-five percent of the streets are major streets, combination of arterials and collectors.
Um, my name is Marissa Assunzion. I'm a pavement, um, data technician for Harrison Associates. I was involved in the, um, budget analysis for this project, as well as quality control on the inspections. I'm briefly going to go over our inspection procedures tonight. Um, we use the MTC methodology of inspections and take an inspection sample every thousand feet, and, um, after we review the whole section, we locate the most representative, um, part of the street, meaning not the worst part or the best part of the street, so somewhere in the middle. Um, these are the seven distresses we look for on field. Um, for each distress, we assign a severity, low, medium, and high, as well as a quantity of measurement, which is linear footage or square footage, depending on the distress type. Um, with this data, we come up with the PCI, as Vijay said, is a Pavement Condition Index, ranges from zero to a hundred, zero being completely filled, almost dirt, and one hundred being a brand-new street. Fairfax falls in the good category. Um, we did inspections last summer, and we came up with a PCI of a sixty-eight. The top chart shows, um, the breakdown of PCI by functional class. Um, the bottom-left chart, it shows the miles of streets by condition, so you could see that about half of Fairfax's streets is in the excellent and very good category, and not even a mile of the streets is in the very poor category. So, um, the PCI is deteriorated by one point since last summer. It's now a sixty-seven, and that's due to the natural deterioration of the curve or the pavement. This is a map that displays all the segments in Fairfax. It outlines the street condition by, um, the streets by condition. You'll see that most of the map is blue and yellow, and that's in the good and very good category. The green areas is the excellent streets, and, um, the red is in the fair, failed and very poor category. This chart displays, um, all the agencies within Marin County, so if you compare Fairfax to the rest of the county, it falls right in the middle.
After completing our field survey and, uh, populating the, uh, the database with, uh, the, the pavement condition and calculating the Pavement Condition Index for the entire network and for each of these streets, uh, there was the, uh, the maintenance treatment, uh, maintenance, uh, treatments have been selected by the agency for each of these pavement ranges. So for example, um, for, for any street that falls in the excellent category, which is a PCF ninety to a hundred, we do nothing, and, um, and, uh, the, 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 the pavement category between seventy and eighty-nine, which is a very good category, that's the preventive maintenance category, where you apply slurry, slurry seal or crack seal or any of the, uh, seals that the agency would like. Um, and the good and poor category typically would be a thin SEO lay and a thick SEO lay, and finally, the, the very poor condition category, which ranges from twenty-four to, uh, zero to twenty-four PCI, would be a reconstruct. With this information in, in the program, we calculated the budget needs analysis, so this is the, uh, the needs required to maintain the PCI to a point, uh, where only preventive maintenance is required. So the program basically generates this, and, um, this is just to get an idea as to where we are in terms of our PCI, and how much money is needed, and what the backlog is. So if, in the best-case scenario, if the agency spends about eight-point-six-seven million in about five years, I know it is not practical, but just to get an idea where we are at right now, the PCI would be, would, it would move from a sixty-seven or a sixty-eight to an eighty-five by the end of five years. So with, with keeping that in mind, the, um, and if, if nothing is tree, if nothing is done to the streets, the, the PCI slides down from a sixty-seven to a fifty-eight. So this is one of the standard scenarios that, that we generate to get, uh, a comparison with the other scenarios that we've included. So in addition to the budget needs average, we also look at various funding scenarios. For example, no funds. Let's say, do you do nothing? What would happen to the PCI, and what happens to the backlog? Um, so on and so forth. Uh, we also, there are a couple of standard MTC-required scenarios wherein, uh, MTC wants to know how much money would it need to bring the, to maintain your existing PCI at fifty-eight for, for about five years? How much money would it need for the agency to spend every year to bump up the PCI by five points? And a couple of annual budgets that we've, uh, calculated for the agency as well, and Garrett is going to talk, uh, more about the funding scenarios. So with all these scenarios generated, we, we look at the PCI, which I just discussed. So it's a representation of all these, um, uh, funding options that we have, and, and the impact of PCI on these funding options, and this is the chart that, uh, displays that. Likewise, we also look at the, the backlog. That's the deferred maintenance. This is the amount that gets accrued over a period of time for the treatments that have not been applied. So this is the, uh, to begin with, the, the current backlog is about four-point-six-four million. That's the, the backlog that we have. And that's where we got, this is the, the number that we got from the budget needs, where it's the unconstrained budget, um, that you just saw. And with this backlog, let's say if you, um, do nothing, the, the backlog would go, would increase to about seven-point-three-one million by the end of five years, and, and so on and so forth, and we have, uh, the, uh, the budget needs average, which is the unconstrained budget, the, uh, the backlog would go down to about half a million. I wouldn't say these are Harrison Associates recommendations. I would say it's more a program recommendations where, um, the, uh, we look at the point where the, uh, the PCI goes up and the deferred maintenance, which is a backlog, which comes down. With just the PCI going up by the end of five years, you, the agency would have to spend about, close to about seven-hundred thousand dollars annually, which is not practical, and the annual budget of one-point-two million on an annual basis, which is to get the PCI going up and the deferred maintenance going down at the same time, because both of these are critical. Um, a couple of other general recommendations are, uh, the arterials, arterials and collectors, which are the major streets, need to be inspected every two years. Residential streets need to be inspected every four years, and, uh, we also would, uh, the program also recommends the, uh, the agency to update maintenance information. Any streets that have had any treatments done, uh, in the last couple of years, that information needs to be in the program, because, um, all the projections are based on the, uh, PCIs, and the PCIs are in a way related to the maintenance information that's been populated. I'll let Garrett talk about the, uh, staff recommendations now.
So what I, what we thought is, I go over the staff recommendations, and then we can open it up for any questions you may have. But obviously, we don't have one-point-two million to spend every year on streets. What we do have is we usually budget about a hundred-and-fifty thousand, give or take, each year. And in essence, what that does, if you look at one of the tables, is over a five-year period, it keeps your, it reduces, well, PCI is going to drop, but it drops to a level from sixty-eight or sixty-seven to sixty. If we did nothing, it would be fifty-eight. So you're saving two there. I don't know how much of a difference that makes, but set that aside. Some of the things we thought that might be a way to address our maintenance needs in the town is that, based on that budget, is perhaps that when we pursue federal and state funding, that we just focus it, um, uh, for those roads that we seek that funding, we just delay doing any, spending any of the local money on those streets. We wait till we get a grant, then provide the matching funds, and then do the work on those streets that actually could qualify for grant funding. What that does is maybe for Sir Francis Drake, which probably qualifies for that funding, it might just delay that work, but it does free up money then to spend in other streets. Uh, what we do spend is we allocate about twenty to thirty thousand a year on preventive maintenance activities, whether it's slurry seal, we do, uh, repairs, potholing, patching, that's what we do. Uh, what we're recommending is we do something a little different. Um, there are a lot of streets out there that require reconstruction. Um, you've heard from the residents from Hickory, heard some residents on some other streets. What we thought is maybe we allocate thirty thousand for something that we call a dig-out program. In essence, what that is, is targeted reconstruction. We would just reconstruct a portion of the worst sections of streets and neighborhoods, and that's kind of a permanent repair, as opposed to trying to do something temporary. We're thinking we would target streets with a PCI below fifty, and priority for those streets, uh, below thirty. Uh, we would also, and we already do this, but what we do is create a better mechanism to provide an opportunity for neighborhoods to ask for a review of their streets, um, so that we could go look and see if we need a dig-out, or we could try to do something else. Uh, one of the things that we currently do is we do try to set aside some funds to leverage with other opportunities. So for example, the Water District was doing some work up on Toyon, and for extra fifteen thousand dollars, we were able to pave a good portion of the street, just because the contractor's already there, so just for an additional amount, really, just for labor materials, that seemed to make sense. And again, obviously, as part of the budget process, the council would then, we would discuss with council these programs, what streets we're thinking about, and then you can make your decisions then. I think the PMP program's very important. It's a good guide. Uh, we need it for federal money, um, but we can always adjust our local, local approach. And then the last recommendation for, uh, the council is perhaps we want to explore additional funding options. One is later on this evening, we'll talk about Measure I. Perhaps we, if there's an increase in Measure I, we dedicate a portion toward road maintenance. Another thing we'd take a look at is impact fees. We could do impact fees, perhaps utility companies are digging up the road, new development, take a look at that. Obviously, continue to pursue federal and state funding, and one thing that, I don't know how feasible it would be, but you could establish assessment districts in different area, with the concept being if some neighborhoods were willing to pay all of a portion, maybe they have a priority. That's sort of like them sharing in the costs. So those are some thoughts. So with that, that's really the staff recommendation, and I know Harrison Associates are available to answer any questions.
An excellent report. Thank you. Questions?
I have a question. Um, so I have two questions. One is, on the map, um, I noticed that in the staff report, it talks about, uh, PCI twenty-seven and lower have no useful life remaining. However, the map depicts red of zero to twenty-five, so I know there's a chart that I could go back and try to figure out what those streets are. Probably, and you guys know better than me, it would seem to me that it'd be good to show zero to twenty-seven, so we would just know what those ones are with no useful life remaining.
The streets with, uh, zero useful life would be anywhere, again, it's, uh, PCI twenty-five and below. It's not twenty-seven. It's really fine.
Okay, well, then that's an error in the staff report.
Well, maybe what I did was, I looked at the actual chart, the, the list all the roads, and they had some listed at twenty-six and twenty-seven, and it said useful life was zero.
Oh, I see. So it's almost close to getting there.
But it's around, close to twenty-five, yeah. So that's why I was just skeetering. There's only like two or three more, so I probably should have let you know I did that. Sorry.
Okay, and then one other question. Um, excuse my ignorance, but I understand what arterial road is. I understand residential. What's a collector?
Collectors are, uh, the, the roads that connect the arterials and residentials.
Okay.
So that's in between. It's one of the major roads. So arterials are the roads that, that go and connect to the interstate, major roads, and collectors are, um, also considered major, major streets, but they connect the, the arterials to residential streets.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have a question for our town manager. Um, I understand you want to bring this back to us during the budget process, um, and tell us what roads that you're interested in, but I actually had had an expectation based on last month's report that we would actually have a better feel for what roads we were talking about, and I worry a little bit that during the budget process, we're going to be looking at big-picture stuff, and to, to get down to the details might be difficult. So, um, I'm just sort of putting a plea out that we actually do spend more time on that, because I really I really thought we were going to get that tonight.
Oh, okay, okay, yes, we could do that. I think part of the guidance that we needed is this program, depending on the amount you put in, it changes which streets it recommends that you do repair to preventive maintenance, because it, it takes into account how much something costs, and it does all these adjustments. So there's little, there's changes every time you tweak the model. Although for the dig-out program, we could start that now, if the council thought that was fine, roll that out to the neighborhoods.
But in this, in this staff report, we're not being asked to change a budget. So we're basically staying status quo for 13, 14. So I guess my expectations were different, I understand that, but I, I do hope that we get a little more specifics on the roads that you want to do, just the maintenance or dig-out versus the slurry versus, you know, more major repairs.
Yes, we'll, we'll definitely include that in the budget. I just think right now, all we have is, we pretty much spent most of the money, but we have 30,000 we could use for a dig-out program and some patching and repairs.
Okay, thank you.
Can I sort of piggybacking on that in terms of what I thought might come tonight, was asking that we do some kind of getting back in touch with the Hickory residents, because they came with their petition and they were, they were very clear about what it is that they were telling us and what they would like to see happen. So I would like to direct staff to make sure that they get some specific information about the digging out and what the options are, and so that they feel as though we are addressing their concerns. So, thanks.
Yeah, I, I did talk to one of those Hickory residents today before this meeting, and I don't see him here, but I did earlier, but maybe it got too late. Yeah, I mean, I get, I guess with the, the general approach of this, it really is a stitch in time saves nine, to quote the Ben Franklin thing, but you know, you really, the top half of that early graph, you know, you're, you're paying significantly less to keep things up in the top half of that. So it really makes sense to do that. My problem is, you know, there very often is like a little problem area on some street that's ordinarily pretty good. I've seen what, I live on a street that got a slurry seal that was probably a little bit past the point where it should have gotten a slurry seal, but you know, and it lasted for about a year and a half, maybe two years, so you know, maybe that, what you're talking about Garrett, is the going, you know, the pat, you know, the pothole patching kind of stuff that staff does, I mean, we are set up with our trucks so that we can throw three guys at it and, and kind of do, you know, it's not stellar, but it's cheap. And unfortunately, we've got a lot of deferred maintenance around town, and you know, results eventually in streets like Hickory being around. When my conversation with him, he says, well, you know, there's, it's probably one of the longer streets that's in that bad shape. And he's like, yeah, that's probably what, you know, makes it more expensive and there's just a few people on it, which is why it's been deferred for so long, I think. Yeah, the partial dig-out is, you know, we can, you know, it's more attainable. You know, we can get the worst hazards away, you know, it's, it's kind of a halfway deal. But when we do visit this, I think we should talk about it in terms of the budget. I mean, I'm open to the idea of linking part of the parcel tax renewal to it.
Okay, so what do you want, Garrett? Do you want to bring this back next month, or do you want to address it in the budget? Tell the Hickory folks that we'll be addressing it in the budget conversation.
Yeah, I, I think what we're recommending is we'll move forward with the dig-out program, we'll talk to Hickory residents about that. Within the budget cycle and the capital improvement portion of the budget, we'll make a recommendation to you on the roads, what to set aside for preventive maintenance, patching, dig-out, opportunities, leverage funds, and which roads we'll be targeting for improvements. We'll have that level of specificity I think you're looking for.
So today you would just like us to accept the pavement management program?
That's correct.
Okay, can I have a motion on that?
So moved.
A sec.
Cola Reed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good report. Moving on to number 20, this is mine, and it's on the Cheetahs Low thing. And I want to get the sense of the council, what they want to do here. This was as the, as my memorandum states, the idea came to us from former mayor Pam Hartwell. And it was her, I think it was her baby, it was, it was, it was a good idea and she carried it forward, I think, to a certain degree, and then unfortunately, she left us, and when she did so, the project, you know, sort of for lack of immediate parenting, sort of fell a little bit astray. But a committee has been formed, I think, a good committee, a couple of the folks are here today, and under the leadership of Barbara Kate, I think that the organization is going to do quite well. The question is about past dues. And so I'm asking the council to consider loaning the past dues 13, 14, primarily as a loan, I would say. And dues going forward, I know that we, we voted on this not to support it last year, but in 13, 14, they're on, on 14, 15, they're on their own, but for the past dues, it would be quite a, I think, a heavy load to expect them to come up with almost $6,000. One of the things, when we were doing the economic forum the other day, was the question about values and how we want to market and brand the town. And I also had the chance to visit with the Chamber of Commerce last week at their meeting, and this issue came up in conversation. And I, I must say, as somebody who, who just didn't have that much of a commitment to Cheetahs Low, as time went on and as I became more familiar with it, attended, I think, with Larry and other members of the community, a really good forum here in February with the head of Cheetahs Low USA, Virginia Hubbell. I began to see the benefits, the outsized benefits, if you will, of maintaining a strong commitment here. And I see this sort of transitioning over time and getting it away from being town-supported to independent, but I think that it, in this growing period with Pam having left and new leadership coming in, that it, I would hate to see it die in the vine. The second part of this is when Virginia was here, she took me aside and said, you know, Cheetahs Low, and you could see that there are a vast number of Cheetahs Low cities across many, many continents. You know, she suggested unlike, you know, many other things, that Cheetahs Low is sort of a mayor-driven, top-down, rather than a bottom-up sort of operation, and it's sort of a little different than our committees, which are, you know, volunteers and the rest, which seem to be more from the bottom up, and rather than having the council dictate to them. And I said, okay, that's really great. And I said, what do you want me to do, Virginia? She said, I'd like you to attend the conference. And I said, oh, you're from Sonoma, I'm happy to head over to Sonoma and attend the conference. She said, well, you know, it's, it's in the Netherlands. And I said, the Netherlands? When she told me the date, I realized that by chance our family vacation to see our kid would have us merely hundreds of miles away. And I said, sure, why not? But I must say, what I'm asking for the council to do here is, is give probably a loan here, because I do not feel, and I won't attend the, I've signed up for it, but I won't attend the conference at my own cost, of course. If we're in arrears, not just, you know, on the precipice of being two years in arrears. So I, I'm asking the council, really, direction this evening. If you want to, you know, give them a loan for a little under three grand, terrific. If not, I kind of have to know, because I want to be fair to the committee and inform them and also the Cheetahs Low folks. I might say that the Cheetahs Low International Poohba is visiting from Italy much later this year, I think October. And I'm hoping that we can host him, having, you know, all of our dues paid up. So with that long-winded recitation of my memorandum, I look forward to your thoughts.
I have a question. So if we were to go forward with a loan for the past due, how would we guarantee payment?
Yeah, ask the committee.
Okay, well, before we go there...
I will tell you that they have a number of fundraising ideas.
Okay. The other thing, I mean, I may sound like Penny Pincher, but you know, on item five on our agenda, the bridge project, we're taking nearly 3,000 or 3,000 plus out of reserves to pay for bridges, which I think is valid, but there's many other good things that I know the council did before the economic crunch, that I think would be things that we should revisit if we want to start absorbing $3,000 into the budget. If we were to go forward with a loan, just to pay the past due, I would want to know that we were actually going to get repaid in this year, and then going forward, a commitment from the businesses to take, you know, move forward and take it over, so we wouldn't be here, you know, a year from now saying, is it going to die on the vine? And so that's my thoughts.
Well, there's a number of Cheetahs Low folks and, and members of the chamber who are here who can pick up that conversation. I might say that over, over the past, we have loaned money, you know, it's incubator money, and I think for the most part, we've gotten it back. John?
Yes, I mean, I, I voted for this when Pam first brought it along. The dues at that point were 800 bucks. They're three times that per year now, which is a significant increase over that amount of time. And in fact, I thought it, when I was mayor last year, I, you know, when it went up almost as much as it is right now, I kind of balked at that, and I suggested that some of the businesses around town that stood to possibly benefit from this, you know, might be interested in ponying up some money. I didn't hear a lot of positive noise back, brought it to the council, and the council declined to fund it last year. It's, I mean, if you look at the roster of cities, you know, a lot of them are in Italy and get a lot of, there's a lot of tourist dollars in Italy, and there's kind of the massive things. I'm wondering if at this conference, you can suggest a, you know, if, if this does pass here, if you could come and suggest a sliding scale, if you will, I mean, it's, you know, we're not really driven by tourist dollars here, and you know, I, I don't really see that a lot of people say, hey, let's do, you know, a Cheetahs Low tour of all the thriving cities in the United States, of which we are one of three, you know, to do that and really, you know, pack the coffers of those towns. That criticism there, I mean, a lot of the principles of this is really us. It's, it's about community, it's about slowing down, enjoying your food and your environment and your neighbors, and you know, a lot of the principles of this sound like Fairfax. So, you know, it, it's, it's a good program, it's just, along with a lot of these top-down things, especially in Europe as opposed to America, there's more money involved. I would get things to say, oh, you know, who, which of your department heads have you tasked with, you know, furthering Cheetahs Low's objectives? You know, and their objectives of things that happen in Fairfax anyway, usually with volunteers and not with department heads and, you know, staff. So it's kind of an apple and orange thing. I, I would like to get a better rate from Cheetahs Low. I mean...
Can I just ask, before we even go further with rates and all of that, is, I don't mean to be the Cheetahs Low ignoramus or Grinch, but I, even having watched it emerge through sustainable Fairfax and Pam's involvement, I don't really understand, except philosophically, and that we are aligned philosophically, what exactly happens with Cheetahs Low and how it benefits the town, or whether it's just having this, this title that we are a Cheetahs Low town. I, I really would like to know. I, I would like to hear from the committee as to what are the activities and how does it match and how do we all, how does it play out here in Fairfax? So I would love to hear that before we talk further about fees and funding.
Karen, if Larry?
So I was our representative for Cheetahs Low for, I think, since Pam left, and it was moribund, it hadn't met, hadn't raised dues, it just was, had become inactive. So with the town clerk's help, we chased down the members after some chasing and got an initial meeting together. And it was literally kind of a do or die thing, literally, because it hadn't been going anywhere and owed money, and so we decided to give it the old college try and organize the meeting where Virginia came in, and she's a great speaker, there's great values that it promotes, and it promotes an affiliation with other like-minded municipalities. But, you know, my intent in doing that was really to reach out to other communities in Ross Valley, San Onkelmo, West Marin, and our surrounding neighbors that I think share similar values to help, to, to do a joint membership and to spread the load of the dues. I also suggested that each of us on the committee contribute money towards the dues. I haven't heard back from anybody about doing that. I offered to put up 100 bucks, my offer still stands, nobody took me up on the offer, at which point I felt I was in conflict with the Cheetahs Low committee, and I just tendered my resignation. So I would say at best, it's a loan kind of deal. The council wants to do it, I, we would be paying back dues. I don't know if that's a gift of public funds, it's pretty close in my estimation, because we haven't really gotten anything for it. So I'm still willing to put in 100 bucks, so it'll be a little bit less. I'd like to see other Cheetahs Low committee members do the same, because I think that's really where the rubber hits the road on this deal. It's, I, there's a lot of things we're not supporting that we used to support. We used to support sober graduation, we used to support battered women shelters, there's all, you know, the Ritter House is having troubles in San Rafael. So that's where I'm at.
Mr. Sergeant, before you speak, can I ask the other members of the, you know, two members of the committee, if they would like to come up and share their thoughts? Day Elizabeth?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Von Hollam. I'm not a Fairfax resident, so I don't know if you want to hear from me now, later, or not at all. I am a Ross Valley resident, fairly newly, within a year, and I am a member of the Steering Committee, or I'm part of the Steering Committee for Cheetahs Low USA. I think you all have raised some very valid concerns, and I'm certainly not here to say that Fairfax must continue as a Cheetahs Low town. It doesn't have to. However, I think I would like to respond to a few of your questions, if you would like that kind of information. So in terms of, let's see, where should we begin? I mean, do you want to ask a question of me, or I can just rattle on? Does somebody want, I mean, Renee, you brought up a couple of questions about the benefits and so on. And I think really there are two things going on in any Cheetahs Low town, backing up to the point where the town itself needs to qualify to become a Cheetahs Low town, and Fairfax went through that in 2010, it's pretty rigorous, and not every town can just become a Cheetahs Low town. So once that happens, there are two things going on. The group within that town is tasked with putting together projects and supporting other organizations that are doing also work around the same values, and supporting, you know, the small-town quality of life values that I saw represented by every single person who was here, no matter what their opinion on the issue. And, and that is of benefit to the town. The other thing is that Cheetahs Low is a movement. It is a movement, and towns like Fairfax and Sebastopol and Sonoma join together and say, we stand for these values, and we think this is important in the world, beyond the borders of our town. And there was talk by various different people today about that sort of feeling, that it's not... not just about affordable housing in Fairfax, it's about life and so on. So I know it's late, I don't want to drone on. And so what I would say is this, in 2010, you became the third town in the United States to gain the designation of Cheetah Slow. There was a commitment made on some level to continuing on as a Cheetah Slow town for three years until last year, let's say, when the dues were not paid. Last year with Pam's departure, things kind of fell apart asleep. You know, there was no leadership. And with my move to the Ross Valley and getting together with people here in Fairfax, some Sustainable Fairfax people and some other people, Barbara Kate and people from the chamber, the idea is that it should have been decided last year in the summer about whether to go on or not to go on. It, I guess it wasn't, or I'm not sure what happened, but in any case, here we are now. If those back dues could be paid by a loan from the town and the leadership that's emerging now, with the vision that's emerging now, could be allowed to hold the community dinner that we have $4,000 in a grant to do together with Slow Food, Marin Petaloma. If we could finish the Lexicon of Sustainability project, which I could tell you more about, but I won't right now, we have money. We have $4,500 to do these things. We don't have a committee because there's been no leadership, but we're bringing that back together again and we feel that Fairfax is a Cheetah Slow town, whether you decide to continue on with that designation and pay the back dues or not. But I've committed to seeing those two projects through. The community dinner is meant to be a fundraising project. So I stand here before you today saying, those things are going to happen and in the course of that, I believe that the money will be raised by the people of Fairfax to continue on as a Cheetah Slow town. So my appeal is to, you know, stand by the commitment and the, make the investment or take the risk, I guess, to make a loan and allow that to emerge now with new leadership and new energy. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions of Elizabeth on this?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say thank you so much and you've enrolled me completely, except that I don't know that the town would feel like unanimously good about paying dues to support being part of a movement. I think it's an awesome movement and I do think that there is so much alignment, but I do want to hear from the emerging leadership here and sort of get whether I really think that they want to take this on and move forward and collect the people and make the projects happen because they're all great things. But I don't feel comfortable, I'm not even sure about a loan unless I really understand who it is we're loaning it to and beyond the vision of it. So if a leader could come and really talk, I would appreciate that. And I know, is it Barbara Kate?
Yeah.
Who has come, but I, well, I would like to hear now as this committee reemerges.
It would be very nice if she were not in Mexico and were here today. Normally, this would be one of these, hey, why don't we talk about it at the next meeting? Unfortunately, all of this is rolling a little too fast. I have to, I have to pay the dues, I have, blah, blah, blah. So that's why it's sort of a little bit of crunch time here. Hate to say it, but it is so, I mean, if...
Well, and I mean, I would just say, you know, it's not like you have to go to the conference in the Netherlands. You've already said that and so it doesn't have to be, like, this discussion doesn't need to end here. If the council would like to hear from more people or feels it needs more time, I, you know, I'd just throw that out there.
No, that is true. I do not have to go to a conference looking at LED lights when I could be at the Reichs Museum with my family looking at great art. So, and paying $400 for the privilege of doing it. So that is the bottom line. We could send you to look at the LED lights in the ground. Anybody else? Jennifer, do you want to yak on this? Anybody from the chamber?
Good evening. My name is Frank Lang. I'm a recently elected member of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. This issue came to our attention at our monthly meeting just last week when the mayor brought it up and we had a fairly spirited approach to it. And fundamentally, being from the Chamber of Commerce, clearly we've recognized, this is an economic issue. It's clearly a movement and that's great and we think that encapsulates a lot of the values that Fairfax follows, but ultimately, really, if you're going to pay dues for something, you want to have a return on it. We've done a little bit of research on it and what we've seen is that in looking just from a very slight, just from a very high-level approach, Sebastopol and Sonoma have seen unique benefits from their membership in this, in this organization. One of the clear areas where they found is they were able to look at, in fact, if you look on their presentation, they've got a, they've got a slide that says, doing things in Sebastopol is like herding cats. Sound familiar? So you've got, you've trying to bring together artists, you're trying to bring together farmers, you're trying to bring together all of these folks and trying to get a common approach. That's what we're trying to do here in a lot of different ways. In fact, the chamber right now is going through a fairly strenuous exercise to devise a strategy and how the chamber is going to approach, how the chamber is going to approach its mission, how it's going to approach its vision for the town, how it's going to work more constructively with the town and everything else. And one of the things that really comes up in our discussion is really what is our role in promoting business in the town. And a large part of it is promoting Fairfax as a unique destination, promoting Fairfax as a gateway to West Marin. And if you look at a lot of the reasons why Sonoma and Sebastopol got involved in this, that's exactly what they promoted it for. As one of you mentioned, that this is, Fairfax really doesn't get a lot of its revenue or get a lot of, derive a lot from tourism, but it could. It could indeed. If you go out there on a Saturday and watch all this, all the bikers rolling through Fairfax and heading into West Marin and coming back. There is a tremendous level of low-hanging fruit here to allow Fairfax to actually make the effort to drive that level of alternative revenue. So if you approach it from the standpoint of pulling people together into a common approach for both an economic as well as a lifestyle approach, Cheetah Slow presents a tremendous number of opportunities. If you look at it from a standpoint of promoting us as a destination, as a tourist destination to drive more business into the town, it does stand to drive a lot of, a lot of potential from that. And then it also allows us to provide a lot of connectivity with the towns that are Cheetah Slow residents. So if you look at Fairfax being the entrance of West Marin, West Marin and West Sonoma from the south, you look at Sebastopol from the east, what you've got is this wonderful triangulation. And if we connected ourselves with Sebastopol and we incorporated what we do, incorporated what they do, we could have a tremendous amount of productivity or a tremendous amount of opportunity to drive tourism into this area that promotes these values, that our residents say they promote, that promotes these values, right? So what we would suggest is that it's been our understanding that yes, it's gone to sleep. It has not been managed. It's not going to give you a return the way it is right now. Go on the website today, you see Sonoma's got pages of what they're doing for Cheetah Slow. Agraturismo, they're doing all this other stuff. You look at Sonoma, exactly the same thing. You look at Fairfax, you got a link to our website. It's a disaster and it's not worth the money that they're asking right now for fees, but it could. It could if we got a commission that incorporated the town, the Chamber of Commerce, and other interested parties to sit down and provide you with a recommendation. A recommendation that says, for this, for these funds, this is what we think the ROI is going to be. This is what we think we could drive in concert with the strategy that the chamber is putting together, in concert with what the town is trying to do, et cetera, et cetera. Don't pay the fees, it goes away. Wait, get a solid recommendation from the people that are involved in it, from an economic point of view, you've got a shot. Still say no. But this is an opportunity for us to look at this town a little bit outside of the feel-good stuff and look at what really is going to benefit the town economically. I was inspired when I first joined, when I first joined the Chamber of Commerce, when I watched on TV all of the arguments about the Chevron thing and I watched all, every, all the testimony that happened in this room. And I was truly inspired at the very end of it because the mayor turned around and said, okay, you don't have to have your gas station. That's fine. You won, but we still have to pay the bills. We still have to pay a police department, a fire department, public works department and staff. That means we have to be creative. It means we have to take the step to make a reasonable decision, a reasonable business decision, to make the investment and move forward. So what I would ask is, and not speaking as a member of the chamber, but I would, I will bring it up and forcefully argue with it in the chamber, that we put together a team that includes one person to the chamber, one person from the town, a person from the Cheetah Slow organization and the committee, and sit down and talk about the economic rationalities of what we have to do going forward with this. We commit that to you, we would give you a recommendation that you can consider rather than a more, how I should say, more intangible approach. That's our approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's see. Questions?
So I have a question. It sounds like, you know, we've been talking about the possibility of a loan that would be paid back by a group of businesses potentially because I'm not very familiar with the movement.
Sure.
But I do agree with Renee that it's more of a movement and I think it would benefit more of the businesses in town if there were more tourism, the restaurants and such. So I guess my question to you is, we're kind of busy with commissions and boards here in the town. It's, you know, it's quite a juggling act. So my question is, if we said we're interested in potentially just providing a loan and getting paid back and having you guys sort of do, you know, the chamber with other businesses maybe that aren't part of the chamber, as well as getting a Cheetah Slow representative, would that be unpalatable to you?
I don't think I have a question.
I mean, would that be, it sounds to me like you're proposing something different, where we stay where we're paying the dues
Right.
and we continue to support it at a town level versus spinning it off to the businesses to really take it on and drive it. So I'm asking, would you be interested in driving it from just the business level?
Well, we would be interested in understanding more about what the tangible return could possibly be from the investment, whether it comes from the town or it comes from anywhere else. So what we would want to do is we would want to look at and go out to our members and talk to our members about it. We would want to turn around and talk to, because before, as I understand it, the last time it was proposed, it was actually, the fees were actually paid across different areas of the town. It wasn't totally by the town, if that's, if my understanding is correct.
I don't think so.
It was paid by the Fairbuck, actually. It was one of the projects for the first year's dues.
Okay. So what I think we ought to, so my proposal is, is that we look at what the feasibility is. There are, there are a number of fundraising activities that we've heard that the Cheetah Slow committee is already planning on doing. We'd look at that and we'd balance that along the lines of what would be required from the town now, is from a loan standpoint, how that would be paid back and then what we would have to do to fund it going forward. But ideally, it would be something that would be equally shared in a government/business partnership going forward. That's the best way to approach it because that's when you get the most buy-in and you've got the most involvement and activity with it, right? But right now, my sense is, I've looked at it and I, from what I've seen so far, I don't think we have enough information in front of us to, to make that decision, would be my guess.
That is what I heard you say, is that, why don't you let us get it together with our people and the different factions and participants and then come back with a plan?
Well, right. And not, but at the same time, pull the people in to do that, but then come in with, let's say, a steering committee, if you would, that would, that would sit down and say, okay, this is the recommendation we're going to actually make to you. And then we would come back and we would look at what we, and that would incorporate what we thought we could do, that we could incorporate what other people could do. It's just, it's one of those things where it is kind of a, as David said, it's, it's a live or die type of approach. Do you really want to kill something that could drive us forward from an economic basis and be an alternative revenue stream? I don't know. But if I were in your position, I wouldn't have enough information to make that call.
Any other questions? Otherwise, the hour grows late. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Morgan? Let me, let me hear from all the committee members and then Mr. Sargent will, will share his thoughts with us.
Morgan Hall, Ten Walsh Lane, Fairfax. Cheetah Slow came to be as a partnership between the Chamber of Sustainable Fairfax and the town originally. And I happened to be the president of the chamber at the time. It was also the same time the Fairbuck got started, then again, was a partnership, same partnership. And certainly for Cheetah Slow, it, it was not only a monetary contribution, but it was filling out this application that was unbelievably involved and long, but it, what we got out of it was that Cheetah Slow values and fosters a lot of the, the things that are important to this town. In addition, it's, it had things that the town could aspire to as well. So I think there was a certain thing that had, you know, made sense about Cheetah Slow and Fairfax. The, I will say that the initial energy for Cheetah Slow was from Pam Hartwell, Herrero. And I think what's happened is largely due to her, her absence. But I think rather than vote nay on this proposal for a loan, I think what Frank was suggesting is, might not be a bad idea to try to get some people, well, certainly from the chamber, the town, sustainable, and maybe people with $100 contributions. I mean, I sold out of the house, I mean, how many sprockets for the mountain bike mosaic, but I raised $18,000. So, you know, I think that in there, there's some, something that could be win-win for everybody. So my, my basic thought is, you know, don't, I mean, if you vote for it, fine, but if you don't defeat it, that would be fine too. And perhaps we can come back to you after getting some people together to figure out, you know, if we can really make this thing fly again. Thanks.
Jennifer Hammond, Sustainable Fairfax. So Merrill Machino is, is our person who's on the committee and she wasn't able to come tonight. But I will say that Sustainable Fairfax supports Cheetah Slow. I attended the meeting and I think they do great work and I think there's value in kind of connecting to a larger movement. And we have a lot of great values here and it, but it's nice to see that there's towns in, you know, Italy that share our same values and it's, we can learn from each other and I like that aspect of it a lot. So as, you know, Sustainable Fairfax supports, I, you know, we can, I think it's a good idea to, to kind of regroup and, you know, come together with a better proposal at this point, but, and anything would have to be approved by the board as far as our involvement in it at this point, so. But we are strong supporters. Thanks.
Thanks, Jennifer. Mr. Sargent, you've been very patient in your waiting. I appreciate it.
John Sargent, 55, Madone, Fairfax. I think you're dealing with two separate issues here. One, what kind of a contractual obligation do we have to pay the existing dues that end in July? I take it that's $3,000? Yes? And then secondly, what, how do we go forward with this, with this slow, city slow kind of plan? As far as paying the money, if we have that contractual obligation, I don't know if anything was signed or whatever. No? Well, if we don't have any obligation to pay it, I would urge the council not to pay it. I am not in favor of this kind of program and I'm definitely not in favor of a program which provides little if any added benefit to the citizens of Fairfax, in spite of all the flowery talk you've heard. I challenge anybody to cite one definite thing that being involved in this program has done for the city of thing that being involved in this program has done for the city of Fairfax. Secondly, if the program is so valuable, as some people feel it is, I think that part of whatever you do here tonight would indicate that the town council will no longer fund the program. But if anybody else wants to step in, including the Chamber of Commerce, feel free to do so. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
I am ambivalent about it. And I think, since I've been on this committee, that's been the theme from the people who have been on the committee until Barbara came in. She brought some almost exciting energy to it. I, I still don't know what it does, having been on the committee and at the moment still, before I don't know how long I'm still there. But I also think it would be a great idea if, if the people who are most, who it's most relevant to, would be like the Good Earth and the other restaurants in town, for them to come in and to be a very strong part of supporting this. I don't remember getting anything that asked for money from you, Larry. So I don't know anything about, I didn't, I'll have to say, I don't, I don't know that I got it, nor do I, had I known that you're not going to be doing this anymore as an aside. But I think if, the woman who came from Sonoma, from Sebastopol.
Ms. Hubbell.
Virginia was great. I mean, that was, that was between Barbara and, and her. That was the first time I really felt anything. It's been ambivalent since Pam. There were meetings. There were no meetings. People would show up, you know, and, and I think it's still like that. So if, if you can breathe life to it and if we can have the support of the restaurants in town who really, that's what it's about. I mean, it's a slow food movement. Then, then maybe after that, you can decide, and by the way, that, that twenty-eight-hundred dollars, my understanding, that is the low fee. And bigger cities pay more. Bigger, so the amount.
I'm sorry, that eight hundred is the?
Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight hundred is what we're paying, what we have to pay?
The low fee?
That's already the lower fee, I think. So I don't know that it's going to become less than that.
Maybe it's geared to larger municipalities.
Yeah. So that's really all I have to say. You know, it'd be nice to see the people from the town who it's most relevant to, who it will help the most, be behind it. And after that, I, I don't know what else, what else really that it, it does do. So.
Okay, then. All right. Any other questions?
Well, I think I, just hearing what Mallory said, it sounds to me like, and I apologize, Frank was your name? Was your name Frank? I'm sorry. Yes. Is that, I think if Frank and others want to come back with a proposal about what it can do for the town, so we really have more tangible ideas and a willingness to come up with the funding or quite a bit of the funding, then I think we could reconsider it. But I do feel that Mallory saying she still doesn't know what it does, having been on the group for a long time, as far as tangible benefits to the town, makes me really think, you know, is this something we should dedicate a lot of resources to? Because we are stretched pretty thin.
Let me just say one thing about that. I just, I just think it's important for, it's important for people to, to, who are, who that's relevant for, to at least have a, before you make any decision, to get together, see if we can have something, come together, to put some life into that. And I don't, you know, I am ambivalent, but I would like to see something happen if it's, if it's doable and before you just say no to, oh, I'm sorry, I was, okay.
Do you guys want to reply and back with the community?
Okay, to outreach to the restaurants, things like that. And maybe do that with the Chamber of Commerce if they're interested. Okay.
Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's exactly what it needs is, you know, especially coming for the, you know, business members of the Chamber of Commerce, it's perfect. Where it really needs is a business-type analysis of cost-benefit. You know, initially, it's like, okay, give it a whirl for eight hundred bucks and we, you know, it was part of the Fairbuck project and part of the promotion there. I mean, there's a snail on the first Fairbuck. That was perfect. But really, I think it needs to, you know, have a cost-benefit analysis done. And if there is something there, I think that's wonderful. That's really what, you know, instead of a bunch of people independently trying to do something that kind of feels about right, I, I think that is an excellent plan to try to figure out how to relate our town to the bigger picture with tourist dollars or however it works. You know, all these bikers ride through town and they stop and fill up their water bottles with, you know, this, we get a lot of complaints out of that situation, but we don't get a lot of economic benefit. And figuring out how to crack that nut is of enormous benefit to the community. So.
Okay, the hour grows late.
I would love it if you came back and gave us something.
So they can come back.
It's not going to make it for your vacation, unfortunately.
It's not going to make it. It's not a vacation. It was a trip. But I will say this. I will, I'm telling the Cheetah Slow community, I will inform Virginia that I will not be attending the conference. But Elizabeth, we look forward to you coming back and telling us all about it sometime in the fall.
Yeah. I didn't go to the one in Turkey either, so.
If, if we could do the lexicon for the Fairfax Festival, I think that would be a really good way to raise awareness because, in spite of my ambivalence about it, I think if we had all been, if you see Virginia make a presentation, it, it, it is kind of a community of like-minded people, which, you know, could be, I could see bringing together a lot of energy and community in Fairfax as far as food and just sort of relating to each other, maybe community gardens, seed banking, a lot, a lot of actually good things, but got to see it. Got to see.
Sorry, Andrew, but you don't have to pay three thousand dollars.
No, I, I got it. I, I, I hear you and, you know, that's why I'm where I am on it. So.
Okay. I got to get up in five hours for a League of Cities Conference in Ontario. So moving on to number seventeen, Garrett, the proving the response to the grand jury report, Get the Picture. And all the Cheetah Slow folks, thanks for staying so late and coming on out. Garrett, you want to take us through seventeen?
Sure. What we're doing is we're asking the council to approve our response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report titled, Get the Picture: Audiovisual Technology in Marin Law Enforcement. Basically, the report's from a grand jury based on a survey of Marin police agencies. Their position is that we should use technology, specifically requesting that the town requests their, well, they're requesting that the city council provide funds to obtain on-officer cameras, pursue other funding sources as well. Now, the chief and I have talked about this. Chief recommends the council decline to fund on-officer cameras at this time. His rationale is that we're not opposed to it, but we just don't think there are any advantage to it at this time. We do have audiovisual, I mean, we do have digital audio recorders to record encounters. We do not have the type of incidents and complaints that was cited in the report. That being said, if funding actually existed to cover this, it's something that we're than happy to take a look at the, in the future, report back to council. And one of the key things are, I think it'd be helpful just to wait to see what San Rafael and Central Marin find. They're testing it on a pilot basis. So really, it's kind of, let's wait and see. And if the chief thinks it's appropriate, he would come back and make a recommendation to the council. So we're asking you to approve the response. And then your supplemental actually has the form that the grand jury just sent us recently that we would attach the response to.
Questions of the manager?
I just have a, a quick comment. I mean, I agree with you that we're not, we have different incidents in Oakland, San Francisco, and Los Angeles. And I also think, I know we said in here that, you know, if we had the funding, potentially we would do it. But I think for us, our kind of town is, I think there's civil rights and privacy issues. And I'm hopeful that we might add something like that to it as to why we're not going forward with it at this time. I mean, you know, I think the way we've said it is, it's, you know, we don't have the money, or if we had all the money in the world, we would do it. I'd like us to consider adding something like that because I think that's something that the citizens of Fairfax would have concerns about, and I would too. And we don't have those kinds of incidents.
Actually, if you'd like to add to it, that's fine. We just need your verbatim language in here. Otherwise, we, we can't prepare it without. How the grand jury works is, any changes?
Is this in the supplement?
The, the form is just supplement, but what you need is actual staff report item. On the second page of it is the actual response, page two.
Well, first of all, if other people agree with me, it would make sense to add that. But if they don't agree with me, I think we have.
I tend to agree.
I think the last sentence where we have, if funding existed to cover all costs of this type of program, town council would revisit this issue. And I would say, however, the town council has concerns about privacy rights and civil rights, concerns of people involved in incidents. Maybe that's not eloquent, but, but something to that effect.
Could I just wait?
Maybe you can fix it.
Okay. I, I don't think I, I can because I actually disagree with you.
Okay.
And I think if you're concerned about civil rights, you want camera, you want your police to be equipped with these cameras because this is an extremely valuable tool in recording interactions between the police and citizens. And I think, you know, I agree with, with what the chief is saying now. It's, the cost-benefit right now may not be there, but in about two or three years, the cost is going to plummet and the benefit's going to stay the same. And I just tried a case about two months ago where it was a CHP stop in San Rafael. You'd be surprised how out of hand things can get very quickly. CHP had a camera, the car was equipped with a camera in the grill, and it recorded the incident, most of the incident, and really was invaluable in at least creating a sort of baseline of what happened. So I, I think it's actually a very useful tool. And I, you know, I, I think the chief has a much better idea right now about cost-benefit.
Okay.
I would like, I would actually like to see us revisit it in a couple of years.
Okay. Well, I certainly defer to your expertise on this issue. So.
But I do want to speak to something that's written on page, excuse me, page three in the, the large paragraph where it talks about the automated license plate readers, which I guess San Rafael has two of at this point because of the cost. But the reasoning, their reasoning, outsiders driving into the county commit approximately fifty percent of the crimes in Marin County. So we, we're theoretically putting sort of a border police at the Richmond Bridge. And, and I think just some of the, some of the, the way they've worded this and the reasoning as to why they want this to happen, I think we need to at least make a statement. And I don't know how to, how we would craft that language, but that states that, you know, we, we're aware, as Barbara was saying, of some of the concerns we might have, and especially in things like domestic violence situations. How many things do you inspect that actually are different than what they seem? And, and I just think that there would be some issues that we would have to look further into before we just accept the language.
I think, I think the distinction is on the license plate reader, which does have that kind of Border Patrol insinuation versus, to me, the point-of-view camera that the officer carries on his body.
Yeah.
That's, that's a different thing. So I think maybe we should include a statement about privacy and the license plate reader. And there's all kinds of questions. How long do you maintain the data? I mean, this is what the debate is with the NSA. It's not that there's, the data isn't there. It's how do you, how long do you hold on to the data? How long does, do you take before you get rid of the data? So there definitely is a privacy issue on that piece of equipment. So I think we could include a quick, quick statement on that, you know.
Perhaps. You have two options. One is you could try to craft it. It turns out actually you have till May 12th. So if you want to dedicate to council members to come up with something, you could do it.
Larry, can I ask you and Barbara to work on this collaboratively?
I'll, I'll work with Barbara.
Excellent. Moving on.
Yes.
To number twenty-one, the discussion of the extension of the municipal services tax. Garrett?
So actually, this, this item, actually, we have a couple of slides we could put up that might be easier to, to see. But this all has to do with the extension of currently is a special municipal services tax. We refer to it as Measure I for five years and really a discussion how the council wants to proceed. Just a little background, March 2005, you approved Measure F, and that was for five years. Then in November 2009, the voters approved Measure I, which extended it for another five years. Generally, Measure I seems to generate about four hundred and sixty thousand a year in terms of revenue. It's actually coming up. The current five-year extension will expire in 2014. So if the council would like to put something on, it would be on this November's ballot. Some of the issues that you really need to talk about is direction to staff in terms of proposal uses, allocations, the amount, whether there should be exceptions, and those type of issues. Right now, how it works is we use it to fund fire and police services, supplement youth programs, provide matching funds for grants, and fund public works improvements. So it is a special tax. It does take two-thirds. And if I can, if I could put a couple of slides up, it might be easier for you to see how the money is actually currently laid out, where it comes from, because we have the breakdown in terms of coming from residential and commercial. It'll only take a second.
So one question, Garrett, while you're putting that up. I had called you about the potential of showing us kind of a range of if we slightly increase the parcel tax with the revenue coming in would be. Was that something you were able to do or not enough time?
Actually, we haven't.
Okay. I don't think we're going to be able to see that because I know I can't.
So we can hand, maybe we can hand that out too. So this is just the slides, just shows how it's been allocated over the last five years. And really, it shows the actual capital projects. In, in general, you know, on the average, three hundred and thirty thousand or so goes to police and fire. About a hundred, hundred and twenty thousand goes to public works, matching funds, and eighteen thousand a year went to youth programs. So that's just an overview.
That is? It's in the report?
Okay. Yeah. And that was attached to the staff report, that table. But these tables coming up are actually things that aren't in the staff report.
A little different.
This table, if you could see this table here, this shows how the money is collected. So, single-family, single-family homes, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a unit. Attached, single-family, attached homes and multifamily homes. And you can see the commercial property because it's per unit. So in essence, everything is residential except for eight percent. Eight percent is the commercial allocation. And that's what the chart really, really shows of how we collect the four hundred and sixty thousand over the course of the year. What this does is, if you wanted to see what the impact would be if you increased it by ten percent, so every ten percent increase, an increase, if you do it across the board, it adds about forty-six thousand dollars in revenue. So ten percent, it's currently a hundred and twenty-five dollars per unit. Ten percent, that's a twelve-fifty increase. At ten percent, you generate forty-six thousand. At twenty percent, you know, you double that, ninety-two thousand. And you could see in examples we did, we just went up to fifty percent.
So.
Oh, and then, I'm sorry. And then the table we just handed out to you shows the same thing. It shows, it shows the breakout by the different categories. And if you wanted to do a different rate for commercial versus residential, it shows what that impact would be. But again, commercial is just eight percent. So that just roughly means you'll have a ten percent reduction if you decide to keep something flat like commercial and increase for residential. And so really, that's the information. But really, the goal tonight is just to get direction to staff, what you'd like us to start taking a look at and come back to you to get something on for the November ballot.
Just a question. There's two charts here. One is across-the-board change. It probably would have been good to see what those numbers are. I mean, I can do math in my head, but when you say plus ten percent, you know, what that amount is, just easy stuff. But the other side of this is. side of this is increasing 10% for residential only. I think I'd asked to show kind of a differential for commercial as well, that we would actually increase commercial a little more than residential. Am I, all I see is residential.
Right, right. So we didn't get an opportunity to change it that much, but commercial is just 8%. So what would happen is, I mean, we could do the math, but if you increase the commercial, obviously, it's not going to go up as much.
Well, can I just, I mean, I'm confused. I'm looking at the right side where it says plus 10% res only. And then, under the line items, it has commercial improved. Am I...
Right. What happens is...
Well, how is commercial in there when it says residential only?
Well, it means residential only gets 10% increase. Commercial stays flat. So commercial stays at 125, and residential goes up by 10%.
Okay. Thank you.
And so we could run any scenario the council would like. Just in my experience, if you make it too complicated, it gets really hard to try to explain what the heck you're doing on a ballot.
Questions of Garrett.
Could I just weigh in for a second? You know, Measure F, Measure I, were all citizen committee managed. And I think that's really important, that we do that, and that it not be another project that the town council hands down. I'm not sure how it's going to go over this November. Hopefully, things will settle down, and it's going to be fine. But I think what we really need to identify is, what are we going to do with the money? Why are we asking for the money? And motivating people to, to want to do it. So, you know, I think we got to really identify those things as well as just calculating, you know, how is this going to pencil out if we raise it by 10% for this tax base and 20% for commercial? And I think, you know, that should be the subject of a real discussion. Maybe, maybe a Saturday meeting, maybe something like that, because things may be a little bit different this time. And I think we, the constant challenge is really to kind of reach out to the community and really get that feedback, so that there's really, like, everybody knows why we're doing it, we're pulling for the same thing. This is what we're going to get done. I think that whole street pavement index thing is a, is a pretty good thing that a lot of people are going to support. The youth programs in the town are woefully underfunded. We need to reach out to all these different parts of the community. And I, I just think that, that's really the key to this thing. And I think that'll, that will give us the answer of how much, and how do, how do we, how do we put it on the ballot? How do we campaign? How do we capture people's trust to want to go forward? So that's the challenge.
Larry, can I just ask, in the past, in the last two, two rounds, how has the citizen emerged that actually took the leadership on this, or that started to really do the outreach in the community? How did it begin?
It just sort of began because of the deadlines, and that's what we're facing again. Because, you know, the thing about it is, it's every five years, you've got to prove yourself to the voters. So it is, it is definitely a deadline-driven project. And, you know, what we saw tonight about, you know, the, sort of the fissures in the community, about the various points of view, I mean, you know, we, we've got our work cut out for us, is I guess my point. And so that, that's how it comes together. We have deadlines. We're going to have a deadline when we need to submit the ballot language. So, you know, and it's, it's coming up, I think, in July. Okay? So, I mean, it's important. It's a huge part of our budget, and I don't think we should just delegate it to staff. I think we've got to take the time, set that special meeting, or two, or three, and get it done. Because if we don't, we're going to be really licking our wounds next year, next year's budget.
Yeah. I, I think it's also important that out of that committee grows, you know, what do we really care about as a community enough to vote for this for? It's, it's a, you know, I mean, it's a real test of what people are willing to campaign around and what they're willing to tax themselves for. It is a big piece of our budget. And I was really impressed with our economic retreat, or whatever you want to call it, that happened a couple of weeks ago. If you have a household, and basically, this is broken down by households, and let's just talk about the residential part. And, and for the $100,000 revenue to the town, which is basically what we're talking about, is around 20, whatever it is, a raise of 22% in this, you know, or 22% of this tax, the same household would have to pay $80 a month in things that they would buy in Fairfax, per member of that household, for the sales tax to go up the same amount as that. So that $80 amount, say it's three people in that household. I know that, I just picked that because there's three in mind. That's $240 a month, times 12 months. That's $2,880 a year spending in Fairfax that we're not right now spending in Fairfax. Well, that's a lot of money, as opposed to, you know, what, 60 bucks a year that is guaranteed to stay in Fairfax and benefit our community for specific line items, such as youth programs, fixing our streets, matching funds for grants. That's what got it to pass the last couple of times. And I think that's what will pass. You know, I mean, if that is explained and articulated in the right way to people, that perhaps might be, you know, it's, it's good bang for our buck. I mean, that's what people describe to me, is it's money that goes to Fairfax. It's, it's our community. It doesn't go off to the state.
If I, I could, I would like to propose or suggest to the council that we come back again at our May meeting, we, that, you know, we set a special meeting come that May meeting. I don't think anybody has the patience right now to start flipping through their calendars, but we need, we need to take it seriously. I, I know we have other serious business that's in our laps right now, but this is critical.
Let me suggest some, a little bit of history. It failed the first time because there were fissures in the community. It passed the second and then subsequent time, when those fissures were closed. And I think I played a large part in closing that. I felt that tonight didn't help, to put it mildly. I agree that we should hold a special Saturday meeting. I would love to see the outreach to bring the members of the community that are interested, because they're going to be the shock troops of this experience and getting out there. It will not pass unless all five members are excited about renewing this, and are able to articulate where the money will go. I think that the four bullet points that are in the staff report, expanding by one this year, are absolutely essential. I mean, history would suggest that this was about ensuring that our police stayed local, that we were fully funding our fire. I thought Larry's bringing in the youth program idea at the beginning was, was unparalleled in, in, in expanding the conversation to an even broader part of the community. I'm not sure what the funds for grants are, but the public works improvements, one of the arguments that you would make to the Hickory Road-like folks out there is, we live in the Prop 13 era. Everything is à la carte. If you like it, I think I spoke about this at the chamber. If you like the services that you have or would like more services, you have the opportunity to go out and buy them on the menu, the suite of ideas. That's the reality that was created back in the late 70s. I think that if we can close our ranks, if the conversation around what happened earlier this evening goes from merely productive to, and stays away from being toxic, then, and I think that we all go out and campaign for it come the fall, then I think the citizens will support it. And I think they will support it because they tune into Channel 27, they show up here at the meetings, and they see that we are a well-governed town. We have extremely competent folks on staff. And Mike Vivret, I would say that you have changed, single-handedly, the culture of this town, because folks can appreciate that every dime is accounted for in exact numbers, and that our budget is transparent, and we can answer questions. Not exactly the historical framework of our finance department, with notable exceptions over the years. So I think it's, it's not a Himalayan peak. I think it's, it's much more of a Mount Tam climb. And if all of our shoulders are put to the grindstone here, and this stuff from earlier today does not go virally bad, I think the citizens will support us. And I would say to you that I think that they would support us with an increase.
Well, let's, let's do this. I think, I agree with you, but I think what I heard Larry say is it should not be a top-down approach, is that we want to involve people in the community, to have them part of pounding the pavement. So let's bring it back in May. Let's also hear, but let's bring it back in May and consider having at least one workshop to get people involved and get people part of the team.
Yes. But let me just, it, it, the operation of the campaign gets run from the bottom up, or at least it was last time when Pam Hartwell-Harros, then husband, I guess, ran, ran it very effectively. But if you don't have all the council members on board, really pressing it, then, you know, that, that's, that, I think, was the linchpin which turned success on both occasions.
Just historical, Matt chaired Measure D, which was the half-cent sales tax. And I think actually, it was Holly Bragman...
Oh, she's talented.
...who may have been running the other campaign, the...
Even better.
...the Measure I campaign. But let's, let's hear from an actual resident.
John Sargent, 55 Madron Road. I would urge you, if you're going to have this, quote, "special" meeting on Saturday, that we don't have another fiasco like occurred tonight, with people not what's going, going on. So with that in mind, rather than the regular places that, on agendas and whatever, that you post notices, I would hopefully urge you to take extra care with publicizing in a lot of places, so that citizens that ordinarily don't go to council meetings or whatever, such as myself, will have an opportunity to have input into it. Thank you.
Mr. Sargent, I got to ask you a question. You're a citizen X. You, we all live in the internet. I assume that you peruse the, the net from time to time? I gather you peruse what they call the World Wide Web from time to time?
Yes, sure I do.
Can, let me ask you a question. I mean, I, I'm befuddled by this constant, I have no idea what's going on. We have a Fairfax website. That thing could just blind you with the amount of information that's on there. And when I hear people say, "I have no idea what's going on," I say, "My heavens. Everything town-related that goes on is right there." And you don't have to go troll for it. It's right there on the front page. This date, that event. You want more information? Hot link on it.
You want me to comment on that?
Absolutely.
The vast, I, I get not only your website, I get your agendas. But sometimes, like what happened tonight, you can talk about various codes and how you're going to change things. The full impact doesn't become clear. And even though I am semi-aware of what goes on here, forgive me, a lot of times, I just don't want to sit through a whole council meeting to make my, my, my opinion known. And I'm telling you, just a minute, I'm telling you, there are substantial numbers of people in this town, you've already had your lesson with that, with that referendum, that are not liking what's going on here. And I think you ought to be aware of it. Now, should we all be more involved, including myself? Absolutely. Will the average citizen take the care that even I do? I doubt it.
And then, it's okay for them to come and complain?
Absolutely.
Sorry, doesn't work for me. You have an obligation in a democracy to be part of the experience. We wake up every morning, as Jefferson suggested, and we make our democracy up every single time. You live in a democracy, you work at your democracy. Don't then do nothing and come and say, "Oh, my God, what do you mean? You've been talking about this for 12 or 14 years."
I don't believe that I ever came in here and said that, "Oh, gee, I don't know what's going on." I gave you my opinion on certain issues. And if you tell me my responsibility is, "I don't particularly like that lecture of what my responsibility is in a democracy." One, we don't have a democracy in the United States. We have a petocracy. So, you know, I, I don't need that kind of lecture.
Then, you know, you do. If you're going to stand there and tell me that the people have the right to remain ignorance, ignorant until the 12th hour, and then wake up to something that's been going on for, in this case, decade, over a decade, and say, "Oh, my God, I didn't know about this stuff," even as it's been widely published.
I wasn't part of the gathering and the signatures for the petition.
Not you, sir. What I'm saying is, others in the community. I say, you're part of our conversation. We are your elected representatives. You have an obligation to stay in connection with us and help us make the best public policy. And you can't do that if you're not connecting, in one way or another, to the, the political activities of the town, which are well-publicized by mail and on the net.
You haven't learned the lesson that that referendum has taught you. And if you continue to act that way, I would, I would say you will suffer the consequences in the next election.
Mayor?
As you wish, John.
John, I think you're right. And I, I think that, really, what we have to do is pay attention to, it's excruciating, I mean, you know, we're all, you know, sucked into this vortex of the, you know, town government and democracy here, which is very important. But it is also excruciating, especially if you don't know all the nuances and are willing to sit there and say, "Okay, now, this piece of code means this, and this lot number means that, and, you know, this is how it means in the bigger picture." It takes a while to get used to all that info. And yes, people have trusted us, or entrusted to us, you know, the, the privilege of sitting here and doing the work for our community that we're doing. But we need to find ways of checking in with them, so that, you know, we're not in, because it does kind of feel like in a vacuum. I mean, here, we have very few people in the audience. Potentially, we have people watching at home as they are falling asleep in front of the TV, hopefully riveted, you know, at the, at the intellectual discussion here. But we need to have a way to check in, you know, you know, whatever it is. Maybe it's some poll, which, you know, has to have very craft...
Well, I've said my case, and I...
Yeah.
Thank you. And Vivret's got to go home. So can we move on to the mid-year? But, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make one small argument. We're going through exactly this problem with the Chamber of Commerce, because the Chamber of Commerce, for ages, has been in its bubble. And it's, 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 your problem is, you're suffering from passive marketing rather than proactive marketing, right? So you're, you're putting everything out on the web, and, and you make a good argument. And from a textbook standpoint, you're right, David. Everybody should be involved in their democracy and all that stuff. But you know as well as I do, that doesn't work. That's not the way people look at it. At some point, you got to have a communication channel that broadcasts out, "I've lived in this town since 1966. And I had no idea what you guys were doing. None." So you, you can blame the citizenry to a certain degree, but at the same point, the same time, you have to also live in the real world and know that the citizenry is not going to sit down and read the town code. I went through the town code today because I was looking for the non-formula restaurant and, and retail thing. It took me a half an hour, and I called two people to help me. I've got a master's degree. I'm not stupid. So I, I've just, all I'm saying, guys, is that it can be, and I'm just getting into town, town government. I'm just starting to tip my toe in this, and from a brand-new approach to it. Guys, you got to get out of the bubble. I don't know if a survey's going to do it, but if you just go out there and put something up in the street and say, "Hey, guys, we're having a town council meeting, and this is what we're talking about. And this is where you can find it. Go look for it." That alone will take care of it. It's a business situation, right? So just that, get some sleep. But that's just something to think about. Thanks.
All right. Moving on to number, gosh.
So, quick question on, on this one. So just come back in May, and we'll try to set up a community workshop?
You would set up your community workshop in April. Try to get a Saturday in April, and then launch it in May, because you're running out of time, aren't you?
Okay. So that's what I need, because in, in May, you have a community workshop on the town center element, so I...
Oh, good God.
And then you have spring break coming up, and you have budget hearings. So I kind of want a little clearer direction from the council. Try to schedule something in, in April?
I think we need to do April.
Because you... Yes, I think you need a little advance, but I know it's tough getting schedules.
Why don't you send around one of those?
Okay. So we'll shoot for April to have a discussion on this topic.
And I want to just... Can I just invite those listening and yourself, Mr. Sargent, right? Is that correct? First of all, John, thank you for bringing that. And I did learn a lot tonight, I will say. Anyone who has any ideas, such as yourself, Frank, how do we get this word out? How do we entice people, help people understand what actually it all is about? Believe me, I've been in outreach forever, and it's hard to get people to put aluminum in the recycle bin. So I just welcome and really, actually, implore people to come out with their ideas as to how we're going to make this happen. It is a topic of discussion in most of our discussions as council. So, please.
I would rather than hold up this meeting tonight, I would give you in writing some of my ideas about getting things publicized so that we have more participation in the citizenry.
Be great.
And I'm sorry, one last question.
Killing me.
Would you like us to find out what it would cost to conduct a poll?
No.
Survey?
No.
No? Okay.
You know how we do a poll? You've got five electeds here who receive emails and telephone calls all day long. That's your survey. That's your poll.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Okay. And maybe to make it quicker, there's like four PowerPoint slides to get us through it really quick.
As you see best.
Problem is, we don't have a remote.
We have a... Garrett?
Okay. So we're taking... Bring forward to your mid-year budget report. This was continued from last meeting. Obviously, our finance director, Mike Favrepp, was very instrumental in preparing this document. So really, quickly, some of the base highlights. We're estimating that net revenues of about $225,000, so a net increase over the budgeted number, $225,000. Also, you may recall, in this year's budget, we anticipated we would draw down general fund reserves for one-time expenses. And actually, that's not going to be the case, so we're not going to draw down any general fund reserves. And that will save us about $130,000 or so. We believe this revenue increase is ongoing. In other words, it's sales tax increase, property tax increase, and we think that's added to our base. So we're going to see that in future years. Expenditure savings. We actually anticipated that we were going to save expenditures across the departments. However, we had more capital improvement cost expenditures. So what we did is we took our departmental savings, applied to the capital, and then we needed to draw down about $30,000 from general fund reserves to make that hole in terms of expenses. And we'd actually think the five-year forecast, which we'll go through really quickly, looks pretty good for two years. After that, you can see that we start to have some issues. So really briefly, property taxes up over $90,000, sales tax up over $220,000, revenues from other agencies up 42. Conservatively, we're thinking building and planning charges would be up $18,000. That's how we get to a number of total revenue increase of $376,000 before expenses. This is just a table. It just shows the projected versus what was budgeted. And that's the maroon versus the bluish color. And then, really, here's a table that's actually in your staff report, and this is the important one. This is the five-year forecast. So in the first column, it's the year-end budget for 2013-14. Total appropriations, that's only about $30,000 higher than we had projected. Total revenue, you know, we had budgeted about four... Estimated about $7.4 million. It's going to be closer to $7.8 million. At the end of the day, the town's going to end with a surplus of $225,000. That's just based on our estimate. That's going to add to your ending fund balance. So you'll end the year with almost $2 million in ending fund balance that actually exceeds your policy of a 25% reserve. You could see you move forward. We're projecting in 2014-15, increase, some increases based on health, medical, some other increases. We're projected slight increase in revenue. Again, we see next year ending. If everything stayed the same, you end up with a surplus. You go forward to 2015-16, it's going to start dropping. You'll have a slight increase, but really, what's happening is expenditures are starting to catch up to revenues. You could see in year 2016-17, you're even. And if you did nothing and everything continued the same, which I'm not saying you would, but if you did nothing, in 2017-18, you'd have a deficit of about $200,000. If you just tapped into your fund balance, you still would meet a 25% reserve. Over a five-year period, what does that mean? If you did nothing, you still would be to the plus of over $300,000. But the whole purpose of the five-year forecast is so you could see what changes you need to be done. So obviously, in this sheet, you could tell that you would need to do something prior to that time. So really, for the mid-year forecast, we just wanted to point out that everything looks pretty good for the first two years, but really, we need to start planning for the years out. And one of the issues, really, this assumes that we have a renewal of Measure I. This assumes the sales tax, which is Measure D. And that's all built into this model. You take that out, then you're going to have a shortfall of $460,000, you know, starting in, I think, in 2015... Actually, at part of 2014-15, you probably would start seeing that, possibly that impact, or maybe in 2015-16. Anyway, it's a pretty big number, something to start planning with. But again, right now, everything looks pretty good for the five-year forecast and the mid-year report. And the last thing in the mid-year report are the mid-year adjustments. There are three things that were attached to your staff report, and we just need to make adjustments. One is adding to the town attorney budget, about $30,000. The other is we're kind of changing how we handle capital improvements, mainly past story. We originally were going to pay that out of all general fund. Now we believe current expense savings could handle about $100,000 of that cost, and we only have to need $30,000. And then the last one I don't have in front of me is... What was it, Michael?
Attorney.
Oh, attorney, capital, and there's one other one, mid-year adjustment.
do it in terms of a budget amendment that would be adopted.
Garrett, do you have anything else?
Nope. That was staff report.
Questions of Garrett or Mike? Any from the public want to discuss this with us? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Motion to accept and file the report and approve the mid-year budget adjustments?
I moved to... Sorry.
So moved.
That's the thing.
Okay, Kohler?
Wait, did I have to say it?
She said it.
Thank you.
Then second it?
Second.
Okay. Kohler Goddard, all in favor? Great. Finally, number 23, discussing, consider requirement of all stores...
Should we wait?
Well, we can have the staff report. To charge mandatory charge for paper bags provided at checkout. You want to take this, Garrett, or are you taking this?
Sure, I could just do it real quick. So, you know, in background, 2008, Fairfax Folders approved ordinance reducing use of plastic bags in town. In 2014, in February, we actually had this discussion. At that time, council requested staff to do a little more research to see if we could actually direct how the charge is used by merchants. Did some research. We found that LA County does require businesses use the funds in a certain manner. Most municipalities in California try not to do that, just because it could be considered a fee and subject to a legal challenge. Avoiding possible challenges, staff would just suggest you just recommend or suggest to the businesses that charge the fee how to use those funds. So really, we're seeking direction, whether the charge should be mandatory, and if it's mandatory, how much it should be. And right now, you could see County Marin and Mill Valley charges five cents. San Rafael, I believe, is 10 cents. There's a bill there, SB 270, that's talking about a 10-cent charge for paper bags. So you need to keep that in mind. Really, the issues are, do you want a mandatory charge? How much? When we should issue it? And if you want us to do something similar to LA County, I mean, we could try to craft something like that.
Yeah, I also just wanted to add that I was doing a little research, and I saw that in... It was Capitola, where they actually have a double ban. So they've... I'm sorry, it's not Capitola. In Capitola's language, what they have is an exclusion for folks who are on any kind of food subsidy program. So if someone is presenting food stamps at the checkout, they aren't... Those fees are waived, which is the first time I had heard that. So I was at the local task force meeting with Solid and Hazardous Waste this morning, and we were talking about this at the county as the EIR has been approved and the cities are slowly adopting. And they're all adopting a mandatory fee on paper. Nevada was also at 10 cents with conversation to go higher, to review it in a year. I'm going to stick with my proposal that I had made, and that would be to impose a fee that is a bold, a bold move, which would be a 25-cent fee, which is not unprecedented. And it would be basically to set a higher standard. And as we move forward, to really walk our talk about reducing waste to incentivize people to remember their bags. And I've been supported in this and most of the people I've spoken with in the zero-waste community, but I do understand that there would be, that, you know, there are things that people might consider a hardship. I still would like to stick with my proposal, so I don't know if that's what's up for discussion right now.
Let me suggest why I don't think this is a good idea, even at the 10% that the state might impose. A couple of years ago, I recall going to the store with no bags. And eventually, you set up that thing out there, and you made bags for all of us. And I remember going into the grocery store with my bags, somewhat sheepishly, and feeling kind of odd about doing it. And I said, "No, no, it's the right thing to do." And over, gosh, a very short period of time, now you feel like a pariah if you show up and you don't have a reusable bag, your own bag. You can get them all over the place, they hardly cost anything, and it's the moral thing to do. And our community has, in large part, in totally embraced this. Yes, there are some laggards, but they will get there. And my concern is twofold. One, it's a moral question, and I don't like to put financial penalties on moral questions. These people will get there. The second thing is we are going to have a renewal of the tax. The one thing I don't like to do is we're hitting people with taxes. I constantly hear around tax time, which is next week, people looking at their tax bill, they see that massive thing there on the right-hand side, left-hand side, whatever it is. And they go through all that stuff. And I might say that Fairfax is the most heavily taxed, I think, little town or town in Marin County. And it's like a stick in the eye. You know, "We want you to pay this and that and the other thing." And you know what? If you go to the grocery store and you just blew it, you forgot to bring your stuff in, well, you know what? We're going to whomp you for a nickel, a dime, a quarter, or whatever. And I say, "They're going to get there." Find me a fourth grader who throws away a can. It just doesn't happen. As a community, we are moving so rapidly in that direction. I just think it's punitive.
I hear you. And I'm not sure I would relate the tax to the 10-cent charge on a paper bag. But you might be surprised if you really stood and surveyed how many people leave the grocery stores with paper bags. In fact, I know that it's a large number. And so if the 25 feels too aggressive at this time, I understand we have a lot on our plate right now. I would say that... I don't know Annie and Janet, please correct me. If there are any other jurisdictions that have only passed the plastic bag ban without imposing a fee on paper, and I think that had to do originally with...
With the way it was done here. No, I don't know of any that haven't. But I think that the reason it's here is because of the way it was done here by Citizen Initiative.
Oh, no, yeah, I know why we didn't do it here. It just wasn't on our radar at that point. And when we wrote the initiative, Larry, correct me, we just didn't put the fee on paper in the initiative.
And it was... The reason it was done in the first place is to address the secret concerns.
Right. That's how they started.
Yeah, that's how it started. Because it's... They wanted to create a disincentive for paper. In addition, ban plastic, but put a fee on paper as well so that people don't go to paper instead of plastic, because you're increasing the use of paper and thereby harming the environment, et cetera. So...
Well, now, wait for the state. The state's going to come up with, you know, by the end of the year?
That may take a while.
Yeah, like the fall.
Or go down.
Or it won't pass. Right.
Well, I'm just saying, I do feel strongly that we go to 10 cents. And as the rest of the county is adopting, I think we'll see a great reduction in numbers. And I think it'll remind people that the idea of reuse is really where we have to move to completely.
Let's put it on the website where all those folks are going to be reading our agendas going forward.
I would suggest that we consider doing the 10-cent charge, just because that's kind of a standard thing. It's... I mentioned other reasons why I was concerned about going higher. So I don't feel really strongly about this either way, but I do feel strongly about making it a very big charge. And so if others feel that 10 cents is worthwhile, I know David doesn't at this point, we could always wait and take it up later, or we could stay and decide to go forward with the 10 cents. But I don't feel really strongly about this. I think most of us are getting, like David says, most of us are getting to the point where we're starting to bring our bags. I see more people bringing bags that I wouldn't have really expected. So I think we're getting better about it, and maybe we don't need to marry it with a charge right now, this kind of a penalty for being bad, potentially, if we view it that way.
Others? Does the town attorney want to speak?
Thank you. So if SB 270 passes, you're going to be preempted from doing this, and it will be governed by the state. And you have to have something adopted, meaning second read by September 1st of this year, if you want to do anything that you have control over and can change. The one exemption to the preemption is that if you already have in place a fee, you can then change it up or lower it, whatever. You'll have control over that fee, but you won't if you don't have one in place.
Where will the state's fee go? Do they determine... Do they leave it up to the merchant?
I believe it's just a requirement, like a price floor, that they have to charge it, but the merchant keeps it.
And the merchant can choose what to do with it?
Yeah, the merchant keeps it.
Because the merchant's paying for these bags.
A lot of these ordinances, I mean, I'm familiar with them in different jurisdictions where I represent. And, for example, in Sonoma County, they just passed one that was modeled off of San Jose, and the merchants keep the 10-cent fee. San Jose is now up to 25 cents. They phased it in. The first year, it was 10 cents, and then it went to 25 cents on paper. But most places, I think 5 cents is on the very low end of things. 10 cents seems to be the standard. 25 is on the higher end of things. But now, as I said, San Jose is 25 now.
Yeah, the county's at 5.
Yeah.
Anything their knuckle-headed mayor in San Jose does would be convincing proof enough not to...
Not to do it. Well, it really has worked remarkably well there. I was very surprised, but we've had conversations with staff, and they have... You know, there hasn't been really any kind of issue or problem with enforcement.
Okay, what do you want to do, guys?
So just for clarity, if we were to establish a 10-cent fee and the state came in and they established the 10-cent fee, could we raise it to 25?
If you have it in place by September 1st of this year...
If we have 10 in place.
And that means adopt it. And that means adopt it, doesn't have to be the 30 days to be effective, it has to be first and second reading. So you have to have completed your second reading by September 1st of this year. So by your August meeting, you have to have your second reading. First reading would have to be July.
Okay, and if we, can we language this? If I make a motion to adopt a 10-cent fee on paper, can we language it that it can be revisited, or is that just by you?
It would be a direction to, to staff to draft it and bring it back to you for, for introduction. Because the way we have to draft it, we have to draft it carefully to keep it out of what was drafted, what was passed by initiative. So, because we can't change that, and so we would draft it to, to keep it out of that section. It'll be right there, but it's not going to be in the part that was actually passed by initiative.
So you just give us direction, what you want to do. We'll come up with all the language and what it's going to look like, and then obviously you can amend it or do whatever at the first reading.
But not until Mr. Sargent has spoken.
I just want to leave you with a, excuse me.
You got to hit the button.
For the tape.
John Sargent, I want to leave you with one final thought about how communication is very difficult for citizens. My wife asked Garrett here if he could put Planning Commission agendas on, on the web so that we could take a look at them. His reply is, we don't have enough resources.
Planning Commission agenda materials on there?
They are on there.
I'm not sure what my, if...
Garrett, they are on there.
My response was, but I think it might have been, can you sign up for Planning Commission agendas? I don't know if that was the question.
What, to get emailed the agenda, or is...
Okay.
They, they are.
It's there.
They're there.
All right, with that, does somebody want to make a motion, Renee?
Yeah, I mean, my motion would be that we adopt a 10-cent fee on paper bags.
No, that's, 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 that's not how we do it.
Okay, well, I didn't...
So, I mean, it, it, we should be directing staff to, I would say, just come back with a model ordinance.
Okay, so 10 cents on paper, and it's across the board, and there are no exceptions or exemptions for, say, the WIC program, food stamps, yeah, that...
People 65 years and older.
Well, I mean, some...
I think that was when, I think that was, we were talking about that when you guys left. I think that was when we were talking about a 20, 25-cent fee.
Okay.
Although, I don't know about, I mean, I do think we should look at a model ordinance, because we need to look at, at single use and what, that's what's entailed in that.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll use the same, we'll use the same definitions and everything.
Could we just, could we just see a model ordinance at the next meeting, like the San Jose ordinance?
Sure.
Could we just see that and put it on for further discussion?
Yeah, and that, that ordinance includes everything that you already have, that you wouldn't necessarily need.
So could we just do that and then, you know, because it's late and...
Sure.
Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
No. Take a motion to adjourn?
I want, before we do that, please, 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 before we do that, there is a resident, and I don't know if you knew him, John, named Alan Howard. He, Alan Howard, he was a gentleman, he was in a wheelchair with a black poodle. So, okay, so Alan, Alan was a real Fairfax character. He passed away about, hmm, it'll be two weeks on Friday.
Wow.
After a very long and valiant battle, and just a real artist and a real, a real good guy.
Yeah, he was good.
So I'd like to adjourn in his memory.
And may I add that if you would like to see some phenomenal art that he created, he's got a lot of Egyptian-inspired jewelry that is now on display there. They bought his old molds, and it's at Reflections in San Onofre.
Okay, before we adjourn...
Owned by one of our Fairfax residents.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We didn't do the council member reports and committees, and that is important, that we take a moment on that. So, John, can you just rip them off really fast?
I went to the GPIC meeting in this room. I also attended our economic forum in this room. I went to MCC MC also. I went to two different TAM meetings, one of them, the major TAM meeting, where we talked about a number of things. I also, the Safe Roads to School section of the TAM meeting, where we were determining how to crack that budget shortfall. And that was the meetings that I went to this last month.
Okay, so I attended the Marin Clean Energy, it was formerly known as Marin Energy Authority Meeting for Larry Bragman. I'm his alternate. Just one of the highlights is that, starting in May, Marin Clean Energy rates will be lower than PG&E rates. This is because PG&E will finally start charging ratepayers a surcharge for cap-and-trade climate change program. MCC had to charge us from the get-go. I attended two community development block grant meetings, one for the Upper Ross Valley, which is our area, and then the countywide meeting, which I'm your rep on. And one of the things I want to mention from that, which sort of is pertinent to some of the public comments, is one of the projects that's been funded, and will probably receive more funding, is called Peace Village. That is the senior housing project out at the Lutheran Church. And there's been a lot of comments made that we can't guarantee that this will be low-income, these things that we've zoned for. This project, because it's hooked to certain types of HUD funding, has to be guaranteed to be low-cost and, low-income and extremely low-income, and it has to be restricted for 55 years to remain that way, even if they pay back the money. Sometimes when you pay back the money, you can change it, but they cannot for 55 years. So that's important to note. Attended the Marin Sanitary and CMSA Food to Energy event, which was kind of their, going from the pilot to the full-blown program with Renee, an sustainable Fairfax member. Also attended Measure A committee meeting, which also included Vice Mayor Bragman, where we started the process of developing a draft work plan of how to spend Measure A funds. One of the things I feel very proud of is attending the Cannon Village Board Meeting. That's where I live, and that is a multifamily complex that will now start composting. And I believe we will be, we will be the first multifamily complex in Fairfax to begin that. It hasn't started yet, but it will, and I think this will start towards getting other multifamily complexes to do the same. Attended the Economics Budget Forum and the Marin Council of Mayors and Council Members Meeting, where we had an excellent speaker on sea-level rise and how to kind of adapt your communities to that.
The Fire Board, two Chamber of Commerce meetings, the Countywide Disaster Preparedness Committee, the Economic Forum with all the other council members. I was invited and went out for a morning on the deliveries by the whistle-stop program, which is stunningly remarkable. Flood Zone Nine meeting, and three MCC things, the homelessness thing for Renee, the Ledge Committee, and the dinner that Barbara spoke about.
I attended the two meetings. You mentioned Measure A. We came up with a work plan, which was, was going to be continued because of some new developments with open space acquisition. I attended, I'm on the Finance and Policy Committee for the Marin Telecommunications Agency. I attended their meeting last Thursday. I think we've got an agreement on bridge funding for the Media Center, which is the organization broadcasting our meetings, so I'm hoping we can finish that next week at our regular meeting. And I attended the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority. Ross Valley Paramedic Authority is the agency which is funding paramedic service on our fire trucks and ambulance service in the Ross Valley. We have excellent paramedic service here, and as the Affordable Care Act kicks in, hopefully, I think its mission can actually be expanded as a way of medical outreach into the community. So very valuable agency that's sort of operating below the radar. Its parcel tax will be up for renewal in November. So it's an important thing for people to kind of understand how that ambulance gets there, why, why is a firefighter know how to do CPR? All critical things as far as getting rapid response to health crisis injuries, all that. So that's what I did.
Yeah, so I attended a school board meeting, once again, considering the government's governance model for the two programs which are housed at Manor School. Also attended the opening, the opening reception for the Food to Energy Program at CMSA, and very exciting program. Basically, the amount of food scraps that are being collected right now, and it's still in a pilot phase, is enough to power, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a half of the actual sewer plant on a daily basis. And this is just the beginning. The good news for Fairfax is that the program will be open and available to many of our restaurants starting now, as soon as we can get the teams from Marin Sanitary to come out and actually train the restaurants and the food prep people as to how to do it. That is a, that is an excellent program, which is up and running. I, we started something called Zero Waste Saturdays, where we stood at the waste stations at, on Bellinas. That was on the opening day of, of Little League during the parade. And we basically informed and educated people as to where each bit of their waste would go, and engaged in conversations, and surveyed people as to what their practices are here in town, and where they come from, how many people are composting. So we're starting to get a really good database together of people's practices and what we can do to actually increase their waste reduction efforts. Also attended, but only half of the Economic Forum, which I heard was really excellent here. Tree Committee meeting, and a meeting with the Marin Organizing Committee, which makes the REST program operate in this county. The REST program is the, please tell me the acronym, David? Rotating, it's basically a rotating program through different communities of faith that house the homeless during one particular night of each week. This is a rotating program, and as the county searches for a permanent place for the REST program to land, each of the cities mostly run by faith-based organizations are actually taking it upon themselves to pay for and do with a volunteer effort, really house these people and feed them. So looking forward, it will be to look for a permanent place, and how each of the cities can participate in supporting that happening. The conversation has, has definitely begun, so.
And with that, in memory of the gentleman Larry spoke about, we'll adjourn.
Alan Howard.
Thank you.